Can participate in this new energy and the revitalization.
Believing that his community would like to see a new direction taken in the area, Mr. Reyes reads into the record crime statistics and locations of other retailers selling alcoholic beverages nearby.
There is real coordination, working with the officers, with the council office, the community. We are taking real steps to build up the economic development potential of this area. Unfortunately, Mr. Landini was unable to see the negative impact of this facility. So for the record, I need to read this so that we can establish our position, and I hope I get your support. The J L Meat Market located at 2131 North Broadway in the Lincoln Heights section of the city is located in close proximity to several sensitive uses in the neighborhood. The evidence in the record and all the administrative proceedings are detailed below. A, the proposed location is situated in the high crime reporting district. The proposed location is located on the border of four reporting crime districts. The crime statistics for reporting district number 412 in 2005 were a total of 589 crimes. The city average was 291. The high crime average was 342 crimes. The Los Angeles Police Department, as well as the community, has expressed concerns in sale of liquor, that the proposed location will add to existing law enforcement problems, and the city's existing land use tools are not effective to abate the negative impacts which result from the sale of liquor in high crime areas.
Before making his decision on how he will vote, District Three Councilmember Dennis Zein has several questions for Mr. Reyes about the business operations of the applicant.
It states it's a meat market. Is it strictly a meat market, or is it a grocery store?
It's a grocery store. He has other items there, spices, basic sundries, things you would need on an emergency, eggs, milk.
Do they have a separate area where there's like a butcher and fresh cut meat, like a regular meat market would be?
Yes, they have own little meat counter, and they have other facilities that are separated out.
So it's not just the selling of meat, but other products? And I found it interesting that they couldn't survive unless they had the alcohol license.
And again, it's, I think, there is a, it's easy to pass by and not know what's there because it's so cluttered with ugly signage. And then there's posters everywhere with different prices. As the community has said, it's dark in there. The floor is not painted. So there's basic things that could happen there that might make it a much more inviting store.
So they could fix it up in order to attract more business?
Exactly.
The fact of selling alcohol is not going to be enough to sustain a store?
I quite frankly think you have so many bars in the area, we already have enough liquor stores, that it's gonna, we're just gonna add more to it. It's not gonna be productive, or economically viable for the community. And I think it's, at least, how can I say, it's the cheap, I hate to use the word cheap, but it's the cheapest way to get more money.
To sell alcohol?
Right.
And there's many places in that community where alcohol is easily dispensed. Thank you.
Denying applications is not something he likes to do, but because of the stated problems, District Four Councilmember Tom LaBarn says he will support the councilman from the district.
I'm familiar with Lincoln Heights. My mother grew up in Lincoln Heights. My son has a buddy who lives in Lincoln Heights and, on Halloween, it's one of the greatest streets in town, North Broadway, with all the children on it. But this type of activity, and I'm sure it's not something that just happened once, it happened repeatedly. And these officers here explain that it's the interest of the public that we do this. We don't like to do this, councillor, but it seems like the operation was not successful for whatever reason. So unless Mr. Reyes is able to get this here, this would continually plague the community. So I wanted to stand and support it, and also thank the officers. And also say, members, we look at problems. We had a shooting the other night on Melrose near Larchmont out of a nightclub. We should find out exactly what is happening. The police department can't do it all, and we need the planning department to help us to make sure there's tough rules to be fair to the community. So I just wanted to stand and support Mr. Reyes on this case and support the people of Lincoln Heights. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. LaBarn. That closes our comments. We have the motion before us for Mr. Reyes. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That denial is approved.
Also on Friday, January 25th, your Los Angeles City Council considers the majority and minority reports from the Rules and Government Committee concerning the city's position on SB 999, the Juvenile Life Without Reform Act, which would eliminate the life without parole sentencing for minors under the age of 18. Explaining the minority report, District 13 Councilmember Eric Garcetti calls on the representative from Human Rights Watch to convey a story about prison sentencing of juveniles.
Today, this is an item that's before us in taking a position on SB 999, which is Senator Lee's bill which eliminates life without parole sentences for juveniles charged with first degree murder. I know that this is a very controversial area for us to take a stand on, but I want to thank Human Rights Watch, the most unimpeachable of human rights organizations in the United States and probably around the world, for their great work. Essentially, what it says is it gives discretion still for life sentences for juveniles who have been convicted of first degree murder, but it does not assign them automatically to life without parole. We heard some very moving stories, and I wonder if we might be able to call forward to the podium from Human Rights Watch. The author of the report that was before us, who testified as well in our committee hearings on this item, and the CLA recommendation to support this. We had, I think, some very moving stories about individuals who were at crime scenes, might have been lookouts, got convictions for first degree murders in a disproportionate way, based on their race, based on their age, and found themselves sometimes having a life without any possibility, any possibility of parole. And I was wondering if you might be able to just share a couple of those stories while you hold my time, please, on this, and then I'll make some concluding remarks. Ms. Cale?
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Calvin, and I'm a researcher with Human Rights Watch, and we've spent the last year and a half looking at how California uses this sentence with juveniles. Among our findings are the fact that in cases, in many of these cases, where there are co-defendants, these juveniles tend to be acting with adult co-defendants. But more disturbing than that is the fact that in 56% of the cases with adult co-defendants, the adults get a lesser sentence than the juvenile. What SB 999 does is substitute a sentence for, instead of the life without parole, these juveniles would get 25 years to life, also a very harsh punishment. Under California law, they would have to serve 25 years before being eligible for parole. There'd be no guarantee of parole. What this bill does is simply give the opportunity to earn parole, the opportunity to ask for parole. It gives a second chance to people like Anthony C., who was involved with a robbery, but his involvement happened in over a five-minute span. When a friend turned to him, he was 16, and said, "Do you want to come with me and rob these people?" And in a quintessentially adolescent way, his response was, "I don't care." And they walked over to these other people, and as the robbery started, the victim said to Anthony's friend, "If you don't kill me, I'm gonna kill you." And Anthony told me, "I thought our bluff was called. I thought it was over. I turned around to pick up my bike." And as he bent down to pick up his bike, his friend shot the person and killed him. And under California law, Anthony C. is responsible for that other individual's actions, and he is serving life without parole.
Expressing his views on first degree murderers, District Three Councilmember Dennis Zein asks, "Who's going to stand up for the victims?"
I believe in human rights. I also believe in respect for human dignity. And serving nearly 40 years in the Los Angeles Police Department, I have discussed with murder suspects what they've done. Many times, they have no remorse for their activity, for their action, and we're talking about first degree murder. We're talking about an individual that commits first degree murder, willful and wanton killing of another human being. I'm sure we look at our crime wave, and we look at the reduction of crime in the city of Los Angeles, we look at deterrence, we look at reality. And I think when an individual commits first degree murder, the most heinous crime in society, in civilized society, we can't then soften, what are the rules? What are the regulations? What are the consequences? We're not talking about children, we're talking about 16 to 18 years of age. When you look at the criminal justice system and how much evidence it takes, and the trial, gathering of evidence, the witnesses, the family, the survivors, the mothers of the murdered victims, the fathers, the sisters, the brothers of murdered victims, what about them? Who's gonna stand up for the victims? When someone takes a life, first degree murder, and they are convicted, the consequences need to be severe so we don't have more gang murders, more drive-by shootings, more little babies being killed in the streets of the City of the Angels. I think it's outrageous when we have a reduction in crime and we want to soften the penalty for consequences of the most heinous crime in civilized society. We're not talking about a traffic violation, we're talking about first degree murder. We can't reduce the sentence. We can't show that we've got to reduce the rules. All we'll do is encourage that we're a soft society, and what about the victims? I'm concerned with the survivors. I'm concerned with the grief that they have to suffer every single day. And we see it on the news when an innocent child is killed. In Mr. Reyes' district, there was a young baby who was killed. What about the relatives of that young baby? What about the gang bangers that terrorize society that want attacks from the vendors, or they're going to use lethal force? When you're talking about a 16 or 18-year-old that gets convicted of first degree murder, I will venture to say that is not their first time in encountering the criminal justice system.
We are failing our youth as a society, according to District One Councilmember Ed Reyes, who talks about the flexibility that's allowed in the new legislation.
The example that was given, Anthony C., in many ways, we do have a manipulation of our youth when the gangs from the prisons direct young people to do certain things. That's been documented. I'm not saying anything that everyone doesn't know. But I also look at the fact that we, as a society, have not given our youth a chance in many, many instances. You know, Anthony C. was there because he had no walls to go. He went to the wash because there are no playgrounds in this area. He's there because his schools are failing him. That's our fault. But what I see in this legislation, some flexibility, I'm not saying we're getting softer on crime. The individual who shot and killed that person, I'm assuming, is accountable for that, for that action. But Anthony C. was turning around. He put his bike down, he was going away. And he's gonna spend the rest of his life in prison. So I see this legislation going down a very fine line. But with a heavy heart, I see that we, as a council, have significant influence when we make these resolutions known to the public. So I understand what I hear from Congressman Zein, because he was in the trenches. When you look at the eyes of the mom and of those who have been shot and killed in my district, and it happens a lot, there's a real consequence. But I think of the mom of Anthony C., I think of the brothers and sisters, the family of Anthony C., who's wondering, who's helping her son? He did not pull the trigger. But the process sees it one way, we're asking for that flexibility. I don't see it as softening, I see it as trying to become a little bit more human in how we treat our youth, because we are failing them as a society. And so I think there's a direct link between how we treat our youth and giving them a chance to become good citizens.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
That matter passes. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM, on Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 AM. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending January 25th, 2008. On behalf of Martine Martinez and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is Friday, February 1st. This is being the first meeting of the month. We are here in Van Nuys City Hall. Thank you all for being here today. If you're unable to be present with us today, you are able to access this meeting by council phone as well as Channel 35 or go to www.lacity.org. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Alikon Cardenas, Grillhan, Weisler, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zein, Garcetti, ten members present and a core Madam President.
Thank you. Before we do our first presentation, we'd like to go through the agenda.
First order of business is approval of the January 29th minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Next is commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, would you like to go through public comments?
First, we're going to go through the agenda and then we will go to presentations and public comment.
Items one through six are items noticed for a public hearing.
Any specials colleagues on items one through six? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on items one through six, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Madam President, for the record, since items one through six are ordinances, they'll be carried over until February 8th.
Thank you.
Next are items seven through nine, and those are items which public hearings have been held. Reports for items seven and nine have been submitted.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Cardenas?
Eight special.
We'll call item eight special, Mr. Cardenas. And nine as well? Okay. That leaves item number seven before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number seven, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item's been approved. Next items?
Next are items 10 through 36, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Mr. Garcetti would like to call item number 31 special. Any other specials colleagues?
Madam Clerk, I mean Madam President, for item 36, there's a substitute motion, and that has been distributed.
Okay. We should have that substitute motion. So we will open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. And I know on item 36, we'd like to go forthwith. Yes, Mr. Parks? Number seven forthwith. Thank you. Next items, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, it's 10:21, so we can do the, council could have the special meeting now.
Okay, let's call the special meeting.
Alikon Cardenas, Grillhan, Weisler, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zein, Garcetti, ten members present and a core Madam President.
Thank you. First items of business.
Items 37 through 38 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, items 37 and 38, no one called them special. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Those items have been approved. Next item?
Next are items 39 through 40, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. And Madam President, there are cards submitted for 39.
Yes, quite a few cards on item number 39. That item will be called special.
And also, Madam President, there's a request to receive and file 40.
Thank you. That will be the order. So we will be voting on receiving and filing item number 40. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. That item's been approved. Would you like to recess this meeting and continue it to the general meeting?
Yes, that work. Then that brings items called special, or would you like to do your presentations?
We'll acknowledge Mr. Rosendahl for our presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Vendela, come on up. There she is.
Four months is too little.
Good morning, colleagues. Standing next to me is a true community leader, someone who has spent the last 34 years doing what I consider the Lord's work, making the world a better place. And if you would indulge me for a second, I want to read you a little bit of what the certificate says. Vendela Barrett has dedicated 34 years of service to the Neighborhood Youth Association, helping the organization become a leader in youth and family services throughout the West Side. She has been a true community leader advocating for educational and social justice for low-income families throughout Los Angeles. Her determination and drive in advocating for youth and family services led to the National Demonstration Grant Act Together, enabling her group to provide counseling support to greater numbers of troubled youth and their families. Her vision and her success in implementing Act Together led to the development of Personal Best, a comprehensive program integrating preschool and after-school activities to provide children and youth with life skills and educational enhancement services in a sustained and focused manner over critical years of their lives. Her commitment to community collaboration led to the development of the West Side Youth Service Council in 1982, continuing networking partnership representing schools, other local community-based organizations, law enforcement, and health facilities. Her commitment to higher education was instrumental in development of the annual scholarship and awards dinner that have provided more than 120 youth with college scholarships. The L.A. Commission on Youth and Family and Children gave her the award Angels over Los Angeles in 2000. She was recognized in 2007 by the Gloria Kaufman Foundation as a Los Angeles pioneer. UCLA, Pepperdine University, and the City of Los Angeles have recognized her contributions to the field of social work and education with numerous awards. She has tirelessly served on the Resource Council, the Field Faculty Advisory Board of UCLA School of Public Affairs, the board member of the Gwen Bowlin Youth Foundation. We therefore, as the City of Los Angeles, show our honor and respect for someone who has truly made a difference. Vendela Barrett.
Thank you very much, Councilman Rosendahl, and I'm very honored to be here today and very thankful that I've had the opportunity for so very many years to impact the lives of children and families, because the children really are our future, and I'm very blessed to have had the opportunity to do that. Thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you again. Bless you. Soon we're going to get it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Cardenas called item number eight special?
Yes. Do we have cards?
Yes, we do.
Can we go to the public comment first?
We can do that, thank you. I'd like to call up the following speakers, Jerry Pyro, John Parker, Carl, sorry, I can't read the last name, maybe Carl Kenneth, and Mike Ogara. Jerry Pyro?
Good morning.
Good morning. Very, very happy to see all of you here. I didn't get a chance to see the agenda until this morning, so I wasn't quite sure how it was going to be written up. And so my letter is kind of strong, but what I wanted to say about the agreement of the April 14th, 1992 mandate for a nine-hole golf course, and if there was for some reason it can't be built, and I can't see what it is, but if there is a reason, then it would be a park-like setting, attractive and unoffensive to the neighbors. That's been repeated three times in the bill. It was, this is contract signed by Mayor Bradley, City Attorney Ira Reiner, the owner of the company, and his lawyer. Now, this is 1982, and I got to say that the city and the company both have not done their deed. Sun Valley is an environmental sensitive area, thanks to Councilman Alikon, pardon me, Councilman Cardenas, and we really need all the improvement we can get. Just to show the, there's no misunderstanding of the title "park-like setting," the 1982 agreement stipulates that a park-like setting means, and this is a quote, "City forces or contractors under the direction of the city should grade, install topsoil, plant lawns, shrub trees, install sprinkling systems, and otherwise cause the Penrose site to be a park-like setting. The work will be done and shall be including the watering and nutring of the lawn's landscape."
Thank you very much, Jerry. If you want to have one last sentence, it's a two-minute time, so do you want to say one last thing?
Okay, thank you. The work shall be done and include the watering and nutring of the lawn and landscaping after the initial installation of a year following the completion of the planting. So it's very clear that it's a park and not a motocross.
Thank you, thank you very much, Jerry.
Thank you. And I have papers here for...
Great. If you give it to our officers, they'll be able to hand it. John Parker?
Hello? Good morning, John Parker, representative for the applicant in item number eight. The applicant supports the determination of the North Valley Area Planning Commission and of the zoning administrator Nicholas Brown. The proposed use will be very compatible with adjacent uses. It's located on 70 acres, it will be 10 acres. To the north of it is other property in the same ownership, the old Penrose landfill. North of that are industrial uses. To the east is a landfill, to the south and to the west are other portions of the same property. The nearest residential use to the motocross is 700 feet to the west with a berm intervening that will block all views and all noise. The elementary school, Armenta, is 1,100 feet to the south, again blocked by distance and berms in terms of noise impacts. Sound tests were conducted over several years on the property. The city permits an increase of five decibels under the noise ordinance for uses adjacent to a residential use. The decibel increases were in the range of 1.2 to 2.9 decibels, well below that limit. All air quality impacts were found to be below the level of significance. One argument against the application has been to require an EIR. There's no need for an EIR. A mitigated negative declaration was issued for this project, and all impacts were found to be mitigatable to a level of insignificance. The applicant is willing to do a master plan on the property. He would like to do that as part of a one-year plan approval or as a separate conditional use, but he's very amenable to doing a comprehensive master plan for the property and is also willing to change the hours of operation from the present approved hours to 3:00 p.m., which would put it no longer in conflict with the school hours on the site. I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Carl? Followed by Mike Ogara and followed by John Foley.
Morning, council members. A lot of my neighbors and so forth couldn't be here, so most of the 307 co-appellants signed on with me has asked me to speak for them. I'm afraid Mr. Parker is a little bit mistaken on his measurements. We measured 432.97 feet to the village mobile home park. That's under 500, and these are people living there. These are older people. And the last sound test they did, the dogs in the neighborhood over there were just going absolutely bananas. The whole time, those motorcycles are running. True, the motorcycles are not extremely loud, but they're like a bunch of angry bees. Another big problem is although it's not that much more air problem or that much more sound, they say, but it's like the proverbial camel. One more straw can break the back, and believe me, we have so many health issues in our neighborhood, it's absolutely ridiculous. My wife just got out of the hospital on the 23rd, and that was from a health issue. I myself have health issues. Almost all our neighbors are older neighbors, and they all, almost all of them have health issues. I passed, I gave a letter to the Sergeant of Arms, 10 different reasons why this is so important. so important that we block it or stop it. And of course, the very last reason on that is the fact that the EPA has still not cleared them as far as their hazardous waste issue of 1979. We can't find any record of it ever being cleared. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Ogara.
Good morning. I'm a long-term resident of Sun Valley. This is, to put a motocross track in the middle of a residential area is sheer insanity. I mean, this is really close to an elementary school. It's very close to a lot of houses down there. There's going to be a constant drone of this noise. How'd you like to barbecue in your backyard with all that noise going on? The people who live in that area were promised a golf course about 1985, and this is what we wound up for. Mr. Parker said they'd be glad to do a master plan after they got approval. We were after them to get a master plan about 18 months ago. This noise is going to go seven days a week. Mr. Cardenas, you put through the environmental justice zone for us. We need environmental justice. The pollution from these, the noise from these, this is all unfair. Let's send it out to Las Lomas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker here is John Foley.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is John Foley. I'm the owner-operator of the motocross facility. Since the Plumb Committee hearing, we met with Councilmember Cardenas and proposed a couple of changes. One was to reduce the hours so we don't open while the school is open, so we wouldn't open until 3:00 in the afternoon. Also, we're proposing to offer a BMX track open to the public and be free of charge. We maintain it, insure it, and run it, and open to anyone who wants to use it. Additionally, we have over 200 supporters outside on the street that are actually still trying to get in. They're lined up across the street as well, and at the rate they're going, it looks like it's going to take a couple of hours before they even get in here. So anyway, if anybody has any questions, we'd be more than willing to answer them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We actually do have one more speaker, Linda Fang, if you'd like to come forward.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Linda Fang. I'm an attorney at Neighborhood Legal Services, which is the nonprofit legal aid program that serves low-income people in the San Fernando Valley. We represent Trudy Sapachnek in this appeal. Unfortunately, Josh Stalick and David Palick, who are the attorneys for my office who've been working on this appeal, were unable to be here this morning. Ms. Sapachnek is a 68-year-old resident of Sun Valley, who has lived for 24 years in the Village Mobile Home Park, directly adjacent to the proposed motocross. When she moved into her mobile home in 1984, she was told that the owner of the landfill next door had promised to build a golf course on the site once the landfill closed. She has waited 24 years for that golf course, only to be told now that she will not be getting a golf course, but must settle for a motocross instead. The Area Planning Commission's approval of the motocross robs Ms. Sapachnek of the golf course or alternative, attractive, and non-offensive recreational facility that was promised when the landfill expanded in 1982. Even more importantly, the motocross will have serious negative impacts on her health, her well-being, and her quality of life. In 1982, L.A. Byproducts and the city entered into the Penrose Recreational Facility Agreement. Under this agreement, L.A. Byproducts got a three-year extension on the life of the landfill. In exchange, L.A. Byproducts promised the city and Sun Valley residents like Ms. Sapachnek that they would build a nine-hole tournament-quality golf course on the site once the landfill closed. L.A. Byproducts has reaped the benefit of the bargain in millions of dollars of additional profits from the three-year landfill extension. Yet, L.A. Byproducts has steadfastly refused to uphold its end of the deal. Although L.A. Byproducts argues that the agreement no longer applies, in 2003 and 2004, the city attorney affirmed in writing that the agreement remains in full force and effect. L.A. Byproducts claims that a golf course is not feasible. In that case, the agreement allows L.A. Byproducts to build an alternate recreational facility. However, the agreement explicitly specifies that any alternate recreational use be designed to include a park-like setting and that it shall be attractive and non-offensive to neighboring properties. Clearly, this language was meant to limit the recreational uses that could stand in for a golf course, and clearly a motocross whose primary feature is a 10-acre dirt track enclosed by chain-link fence.
Thank you, Ms. Fang. Sorry. Just a reminder to speakers, we have the clock there to help people try to pace their time. Before we hear from Mr. Cardenas, I do want to reconsider three items that were inadvertently not called special for Cards for the Public, so we'll put those back on the queue, and then we'll return to Mr. Cardenas on this item. Those are items 32, 33, and 40. If we can please open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And we will call those special for Cards from the public. Returning to item eight, Mr. Cardenas is the first on the queue. Mr. Cardenas? I'm sorry, Mr. Alakon, Mr. Cardenas was next on the queue, but Mr. Alakon continuing, please.
Members, I'm not sure whether this site is within the 500-feet limit in the proximity of my wife's business, so I'm going to have to recuse myself in this manner. It's out of precaution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. We will inform you when the vote has been taken, and we'll turn to Mr. Cardenas now.
Thank you very much, Council President. I really appreciate everybody informing my office about their feelings about this particular site and about the potential zoning opportunity that the current owner may or may not be granted today. But there are several things that I think it's important for people to understand. In this country and in this city, people have rights to property. And when it comes to those rights, they have a right, and we, as the authority that has zoning ability over property in the City of Los Angeles, have a responsibility to evaluate what those rights should be and what property owners should be allowed to do with their property. In this particular case, the whole situation has been muddied by this Penrose Recreational Facility Agreement that has language in it that I think is very disrespectful to the community, and it's also disrespectful to the landowner for anyone to have even put forth language that is so vague to say things like this. "Any alternative use shall be designed to include a park-like setting, and the use shall be attractive and non-offensive to neighboring properties." That vague language, I think, puts the owner in a very interesting position with their responsibility, their legal ability, and their liability. It puts the city in the same position as well. We have a zoning administrator who opined that the owner should be able to put the motocross facility on this site. We have the Plumb Committee that disagreed with that, and we are now here on the City Council floor having to decide what will be the fate of that portion of this site. I asked the petitioner to go ahead and get support or let me know how the community feels about it. And for a long time, we had immediate neighbors that seemed to be speaking with one voice, saying no to the motocross. But more recently, there seem to be people who live on Irvine and on Strathern Street Lancashire, which are immediately, immediate to this site, who actually say they're okay with the motocross. But the problem that we still have is if one neighbor says that this motocross is offensive, and they are a neighbor, a neighboring property, as it says here, is that enough for us to deny this application? To me, therein lies the legal problem that we have. As a councilmember for this district, you better believe I'm concerned about the air quality. That's why we have an environmental justice zone today, and we have more scrutiny in this community than ever before about what happens to the air quality for the businesses and people and the children who go to school in this community. I'm really bothered at the idea that people think that whatever the decision here today that we make, that it's a bad one. All I can promise you, that the decision that I'm going to ask of my colleagues to follow my lead on in this, if they would, and they have the ability and authority to vote however they want, but I'm going to ask them to uphold the Plumb Committee recommendation. But let me warn you, neighbors, let me warn you, we're very likely going to get sued. That's up to the property owner. Let me also warn you, this vague, terrible, ridiculous language that is putting us in this position is very likely going to allow this owner to come back with a master plan that may even include a motocross facility, and you may find me agreeing that we should allow them for legal reasons. And let me be clear, I don't ride motorcycles. My children don't ride motorcycles. And just as Mr. Alakon, councilmember, just recused himself, if such a facility is even built, I'm going to make sure that my immediate family don't participate in this because I want to let you know that my concern and my decisions are based on what is legal, what is right, and hopefully, what's best for the community. But unfortunately, we are not the last word in this room. There's a balance of powers in this country, and thank God we have it. You are looking at the legislative body that gets to make the final decision at our level of government on planning issues within the City of Los Angeles, and any property owner can appeal to the courts. And if the courts feel that we've done something wrong, I think we're barely in the right here. But if a judge says that we've done something wrong, that judge can impose something that might be like this. Make the entire site a motocross facility. Make the entire site something that the community feels is offensive. That's the chance we're going to take. And I want to thank the community members who have been abreast on this issue and trying to help their neighbors understand what's going on. I want to thank the property owner and the people who brought forth this petition for this project, and I want to let everybody know, you haven't heard the end of it. Don't get too happy. For those of you who are happy that today there won't be permission to put a motocross site on this facility, don't get too happy. Don't bother patting me on the back, don't send me emails, don't say thank you. Pat yourselves on the back, because we have not heard the end of this. This property owner does have rights, and I have to say that for the record, because a judge is very likely going to hear this, and they're going to listen to this transcript, and I want that judge to know, we waited out completely, we know that there's vague language, we've interpreted, and today I'm erring on the side of saying some neighbors feel that this motocross facility is offensive to neighboring properties. So colleagues, I'm asking you today to agree with the Plumb hearing report and vote yes for that report and deny this motocross facility at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Any other members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, we have the recommendation plumb before us, but please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much, everybody, on that item. We can go to the next item. Madam Click.
Next item called special is item number nine, and that was called special by Councilmember Alakon.
We're going to start with a public comment on this. We have, under California state law, we have a requirement under the Brown Act to have a public hearing either in committee or full council. That requirement is 10 minutes, but I think that would be insufficient considering how many cards. This is probably the biggest stack of cards I've ever held since I've been council president on both, on all sides of this issue. That said, in consultation with Mr. Alakon, what we've decided to do is we'll do 20 and 20, so 40 minutes, four times what is the legal minimum there. 40 minutes, we'll do 20 and 20. We'll try to get to as many cards as possible, but know that many of these cards we won't get to. We still have people lined up outside, and the fire marshal is dealing with issues of the capacity of this room as well, so we are letting those folks know that they can listen in on their phones, they can watch on TV, they can watch on the Internet, they can also testify from downtown as well. So we're doing that as well. So we're going to open it up for 20 and 20 minutes, and we're going to put items nine and 39 together, and we will start first with the four side. We are going to set the clock at two minutes per speaker, but if you do not go for two minutes, that means more people can speak, so be cognizant of that. It'll be 20 minutes total, up to two minutes at a time. We'll start first with Bob Barker. After that will be Paul Caretz. Nice to see you. And I know there will be a lot of enthusiasm, and we'll hold the time right now while I'm speaking, so it doesn't take away from folks, but the more clapping there is, that's more of the 20 minutes that gets taken away. So a good, quick, loud clap, and we'll get another speaker up. Mr. Barker.
Councilman Garcetti, that's the most beautiful sound I've heard in months since I lost, left Price is Right. Councilmembers, I think that it is obvious to all of us that mandatory spay-neuter is a necessity. For decades, for decades, I closed every Price is Right urging viewers to help control the pet population, have your pets spayed or neutered. And there are people right here in this audience who have spent years of their time, their energy, and their money trying to educate people to have their pets spayed or neutered. Now, I'd like to think that all of us working together have made a difference, but it's not enough, and the only answer is legislation. And to be more specific, the only answer is this ordinance. And I want Councilman Rosendahl, here he is over here, I want you to know, I know that you object to the four months. All you need is a letter from your veterinarian saying it should be delayed five months. Fine, we'll do it with this ordinance. And I know that you have a farm, you have all these animals, you have your chickens. We will not spay your chickens, I promise you that. We want to get along with you. And the same is true of anyone in this audience with a letter from your veterinarian. You can delay the surgery, but it's good to have it done at four months because they breed so young that something can happen before it's done at five months or six months. I won't take any more of your time, but let's pass this ordinance.
Our next speaker is Paul Caretz will be our next speaker. After Mr. Caretz will be Gary Beers, and after Mr. Beers, Kathy Reardon. Mr. Caretz.
Well, thank you, President Garcetti, and members of the council. I'm here to thank my former legislative colleague, Councilmember Alakon, and the rest of the council for passing, hopefully, this historic measure. In the legislature, we spent many years trying to pass this kind of legislation. The only partial success we had a while back was Senator Vincent's legislation that required that animals out of shelters be spayed and neutered. I authored a bill, which failed predictably in the legislature, to require that animals sold in pet stores be spayed and neutered before they were released. And of course, special interests have much more sway in the legislature, unfortunately, which is why none of these measures have passed. But I have to tell you, we did a lot of study. It would have required spay and neuter at a very young age. We studied it very carefully and determined that this was a safe thing to do, which is an important point. This is a landmark measure. It'll end the misery of putting thousands of animals to death and the misery of staff and volunteers at the shelters having to do it. It'll save hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of dollars in a time when it's desperately needed. And this landmark bill will help provide momentum for Lloyd Levine's bill in the legislature and possibly allow it to pass. It'll set an example across the country for this kind of measure. I think it'll end so much misery of animals and people that I'm just here to commend you for passage of this common sense measure on behalf of the people and the animals of the City of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Gary Beers is our next speaker, and then Kathy Reardon.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for listening to the State of the City.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to lend my support to the ordinance for the mandatory spaying and neutering of pets. And I am a resident here in Los Angeles and married to a local American girl. And through her and her family, I have been, they are volunteers at a dog rescue, and I've been helping out at a dog rescue, and I've seen firsthand the hopeless cause that these people face to try and find homes for pets. And it's the only way to stop that is the mandatory spaying and neutering, because you have a problem, everyone will rattle off facts and figures of 800,000 pets destroyed last year, and a quarter of a million dollars in revenue paid to have those animals destroyed. And it doesn't have to happen. There's two sides to every story, of course, but this is obviously right and wrong. And it's wrong to have so many unwanted pets roaming the streets and so many unwanted pets in rescues that can't find homes. It's wrong that illegal breeders don't pay taxes in the first place, but let alone that they are pumping out pets that end up on the street or in shelters. So I urge you to pass the ordinance. And in my 30 years of traveling with the Band and Excess, I've seen firsthand a lot of pet abuse, and it's a shame that it's happening here in California. And I think you can lead the world in changing it. Because there is some mandatory spaying and neutering laws in Australia, and it hasn't led to microchipping of children. It does work, and it should work, and I urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Reardon is our next speaker. After that will be Lloyd Levine.
Good morning, council members. Kathy Reardon, citizen and L.A. Animal Services Commissioner. I'll be brief. Since the inception of this Breeders' Ordinance, the code that you're amending or considering amending today, our shelter impounds have continuously decreased. In '99, our shelter impounds were at approximately 75,000. Since the passage of this ordinance, our impounds have decreased to approximately 45,000. That's good, and it can be better. This will give us the tools we need to track the intact animals and to encourage more spay and neuter of owner-redeemed animals and animals in L.A. It will give us the tools we need to curtail the impound, which actually curtails the killing. So I hope you pass this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Assemblymember Lloyd Levine is our next speaker. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. In the legislature, we get five minutes, but I'll take two. I'm Assemblymember Lloyd Levine, and I wanted to come today to offer my support for this ordinance. We have been pursuing this in the state legislature, and it's a matter of great concern to me. We have a fiscal crisis here in California, as you know, both at the state and the local level. Each year, we spend over $300 million on animal control services, primarily for the housing care, feeding, and ultimately euthanization and disposal of animals. I find that a fiscal catastrophe and a moral crisis. In California, and I don't know the L.A. shelters numbers specifically, but in California, we end up taking a million animals a year into shelters and killing over 500,000 of those, mostly adoptable animals. I also find that a moral crisis here in California. I strongly urge you to vote for this measure, to begin to stem the tide. As I was explaining to Governor Schwarzenegger and his staff when I was talking to them about this measure, it's as if you've got a leaky pipe coming into your basement, and you get a bucket and you start bailing. And eventually, you're going to need to get a bigger bucket, and then maybe you get a friend with another bucket. And until you do something about that pipe leaking into your basement, you're just going to keep getting bigger and bigger buckets. And that's what we're doing here in Los Angeles and in California. The city Animal Services has opened some fabulous shelters, I've been to the opening of several of those, they're fantastic. But really, what we're doing is just building bigger buckets. And what we need to do is stem the flow of the animals coming into the shelters, stem the unwanted animals running loose on the street, begin to get a handle on that, and then we'll address the fiscal problem that's associated with it. So I believe this is a great first step in the effort, and it really goes to help my measure at the state level. So I thank you, Mr. President, and council members, and I strongly urge your support.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. And our next set of speakers on the fore side, Elizabeth Ohrick will be next, and then Judy Mancuso.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Elizabeth Ohrick, and I am here in full support of the proposed spay and neuter ordinance. I'm one of the co-founders of the Coalition for Pets and Public Safety, which furnished L.A.'s first mobile spay and neuter clinic that the city uses to provide free and low-cost spay and neuter and vaccination services in our low-income areas. It has been very successful. We've sterilized over 20,000 animals in the last 10 years, preventing who knows how many unwanted litters. But it's not enough. Education, building new shelters, our services, they all help, but they are not enough to solve this pet overpopulation crisis. If they were, we wouldn't still be killing over 18,000 animals every year in this city. We need legislation. Those of us who are responsible are faced with cleaning up the mess made by those who are not. We shoulder the financial burden, our communities are made unsafe, and the animals inevitably pay the ultimate price. A civilized society requires laws. The animals cannot speak for themselves, and it is our duty as humane and compassionate people to ensure their safety and their quality of life. When L.A. Animal Services took up this issue last summer at a public meeting, a woman stood up and proudly told the council that she is a hobby breeder, and that any animal she can't sell, she simply gives to the rescuers, as if she were donating clothing to the poor, as if all of us who tirelessly devote our time, energy, and resources to rescuing unwanted animals really want to be doing that. I personally would rather read a book on weekends. I would like my guest house not to be a permanent foster facility. I would like to go one week without having to pull off the road to pick up a stray dog running in traffic. And I would like my taxes to be spent on something other than the housing and euthanizing of so many animals. The mission statement of L.A. Animal Services says, "To promote and protect the health, safety, and welfare of animals and people in the city of Los Angeles." This ordinance will help them fulfill their mission, and I hope you will give it their full support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Judy Mancuso is our next speaker. After that will be Susan Taylor.
Hi, thank you, council members. And I'd like to thank Mr. Alarcon for taking this step, and his staff for doing such a wonderful job on the ordinance, and to Ed Boggs, L.A. Animal Services, Douglas L., Jim Bigcard from the mayor's office. You may hear stories today that Santa Cruz didn't work, and you'll see some fabricated charts and graphs. I've been to Santa Cruz, Santa Cruz did work. The people of Santa Cruz are very proud of their ordinance and what they've done there. They have broken ground recently on a new shelter that is replacing their old shelter from 1985. It is one run less, it's smaller than the shelter it is replacing. Los Angeles built new shelters, and they were over 200% larger. This does work, you're going to be told there's some fear mongering, that this is going to cause cancer. Spay and neuter has been around, and at an early age spay and neuter for a long time. Ordinances, this is not rocket science, and it is tried and true, and I applaud you for what you're doing today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan Taylor. After that will be Sri Shanker.
I am the Executive Director of Actors and Others for Animals located in North Hollywood. We have worked for too many years to count with animal services and the city attorney's office in getting to this point. We are a leading spay and neuter organization in the city, and we have been doing this work long before it became the buzzword that it is today. This ordinance is fair. No one has to sterilize their animal if they don't want to. They just have to purchase the required permit or get an extension from their veterinarian. And if you choose to sterilize, a dog license is only $15. This is the best ordinance I have seen so far because it leaves the choice in the hands of the pet guardians, something that all the opposition wanted. We make decisions every day on how much money to spend on something. Today, I chose to spend a little more money on parking rather than walking. And remember, the higher fee is only if the animal is intact. It is not for the life of the animal. This ordinance takes a fair and easy-to-understand resolution to a multifaceted issue. Once again, it will show that the county of Los Angeles does not follow, but leads. Besides all of the thousands and thousands of dollars we spend on spay and neuter, right now, the city of Los Angeles spends $1.2 million through free mobile vans and a voucher program for low-cost and free sterilization, and more are on the horizon. Thank you for doing this, and please pass it.
Thank you. Sri Shanker is our next speaker. And then after that, we have Phyllis Doherty. Yes, Sri.
Hi, I'm, good morning, good morning, council. You know, I don't think I can add anything to what everyone who's gone before me. This is incredibly important. I think most people want to do the right thing, and sometimes they just don't know how to go about it, or they need a little nudge. And I think this ordinance will help that a lot, and it also will raise awareness. And I haven't heard any arguments from the people who are against something like this that really make any common sense, except out of just purely selfish reasons of, you know, wanting to continue selling animals or showing them. And this ordinance is going to make an exception for them, so there really is no reason not to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Doherty is our next speaker. After that will be Bill Dyer.
Good morning, Phyllis Doherty with the Animal Issues Movement. For every puppy and kitten that is born, some caring employee in an animal shelter must put a needle in the arm of an innocent pet because another available home is taken. In some local shelter right now, a pet is dying, not because it did something wrong, but because there just are too many of them. That's now. This is not a problem in the future, it's not a problem in the past. This is something that we need to deal with today. Spaying and neutering is the humane way to stop pet overpopulation. It can be likened to a societal vaccination that saves lives. It is the best anecdote to killing. The city is currently spending millions on euthanasia, and we have an allocation for spaying and neutering animals that is $1.2 million. It's a tremendous amount of money that we're wasting to ultimately kill a lot of animals. This ordinance does not mandate spay or neuter of pets. It contains many reasonable exemptions. But it does provide for spay and neuter prior to the first litter, which is much healthier for the pet, and it prevents the accidental whoops litters that end up in our shelters. We urge you to pass this to stop the dog packs, to stop the suffering of the animals, to stop the lives of people who would love to be doing good things for animals from having to try to just spend all of their money and time caring for them, so that we hope we can get them another home. Please pass this and help us all, we need your help now.
Thank you. Bill Dyer is our next speaker. After that will be Terry Austin.
I'm Bill Dyer with In Defense of Animals. Dear council persons, today you have an important opportunity to save many precious, innocent lives whose only dilemma was being born, born to be killed. Our city does not need one more dog or one more kitten, not one, until our animal shelters are empty. If the public cannot find a suitable pet at one of our six shelters, they can try the internet, where many organizations post hundreds of pictures of cats and dogs for adoption, or they can use rescue resource directories like this one here that list many groups that have breed-specific animals for adoption. If you're looking for a collie, it's in this book. You're looking for a poodle, they're right here. If you want a beagle, they're in this book. Your passage of the spay and neuter ordinance will go a long way towards zero pet population, for the time to end the tragedy is before it begins. End the endless, needless deaths. Every single life is important. Every single life.
Terry Austin is our next speaker.
Good morning, council. My name is Terry Austin, I'm president of the Amanda Foundation, and we run the city's mobile spay and neuter clinic, and we are here to support this ordinance and urge your passage. I want, my colleagues have been addressing the very sad and humane reasons why this is an excellent ordinance to be passed, but I wanted to address some of the problems that the opposition are going to bring up, because the time they get up will have already spoken. First of all, Councilman Rosendahl, over 20,000 surgeries in our van alone, we've never had a problem with an animal under four months. And there is no medical statistics to back up that there's any additional problem with animals under four months of age. As a matter of fact, if you think that we do heart transplants on one-day-old human children, it's not that there's a surgery, it's how well it's being done. Okay? Another thing that you'll hear is that this is against the nature of the animal, and it's in some way compromising or harming the freedom of the spirit of the animal. Well, the things that are natural for a dog is to lift its leg and mark everything. It's natural for the dog to hump your leg when it's intact. This is also natural behavior, and I don't think we want that either. So a lot of the reasons that people end up giving up their dog because it chooses offense to get out to a female, all of these things be prevented by spaying and neutering your pet at an early age. We run special events in lower-income areas of town where this free spay and neuter program is offered. And since the licensing differential 10 years ago was increased, and our Breeders' Ordinance, as Sue Taylor mentioned, and Councilwoman Reardon mentioned, was tightened, we've had a decrease in the animals coming into our shelters, and it's proven. The one thing you need to ask the people who will get up in opposition, where do they live? They're not residents, they don't care about our city, they don't care about our problem, they don't care about our tax dollars, they care about the money going into their pocket. The reason they don't want a Breeders' Ordinance, the reason they don't want microchips, is they don't want to be tracked because they are currently not reporting that income. It's thousands of dollars. You look in the L.A. Times any single weekend, and you look, and the average price of a puppy is $600, and the average litter is six. These people are making thousands of dollars. It's all about the money, follow the money, that's the problem. It's not about the animals. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the against side now for 20 minutes as well. I'd like to ask folks, please, to be as respectful as possible to all speakers on all sides. Meg Prior will be our first speaker. Sharon Shilkoff, I think, or Smilkoff, excuse me, I think Shilkoff will follow that, and then Kathy Turner. Meg Prior will be our first. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Meg Prior, and I'd just like to say how important this decision is. Unfortunately, for some reason, this ordinance is being rushed, it's on a fast track. I do not support mandatory spay or neuter. I believe there is a choice, this is a right, that is being taken away from us. Councilmember Cardenas mentioned our rights, and as an individual, we have rights. And that is not a right, it is a determination that each owner, pet owner, needs to be able to make as a homeowner, as a pet owner. We need to understand that spay and neuter of four-month-old pets, kittens, puppies, is unhealthy. Their systems, their organs are developing at a very quick rate, they begin development and continue to grow through the age of one and a half, two years of age. And when you spay or neuter at this age, you're taking important hormones and changing the environment within the internal process of the animal. And this can hurt the animal's development for a lifelong health. And that's what we really have to care about as individuals. We want healthy pets. There are certainly people that are doing this for money, and they sell pets, or they raise litters that are unregistered or what have you. That's not the purpose of my message. My message is, I care about animals, I care about their lifelong wellness, they only live a certain number of years anyway, always too short, only, you know, 12, 15 years of age is too long for an animal to lose its life at an early age. And so when you spay or neuter, when a puppy or kitten is only four months of age, it hasn't even completed any of its, some of its important system growth, you're hurting its lifelong expectancy. And finally, this ordinance will hurt the health of dogs and cats. And Councilmember Cardenas, this does take away a citizen's right, and with this mandatory requirement, please oppose this ordinance. And I don't mean to be picking on you, I just was using your name because you mentioned earlier in previous comments that rights, and that's why I was saying that. Thank you.
Sharon Shilkoff is our next speaker. After Shilkoff is Kathy Turner. After that, good morning.
I am a resident of Woodland Hills in Mr. Zines and Mr. Levine's district. First of all, Ms. Mancuso, I'm also the Secretary of Concerned Dog Odors of California, and we had offered to fly in experts to the city of Los Angeles to really we had offered to fly in experts to the city of Los Angeles to really speak on the health issues of that this new ordinance really doesn't take a good look at. Veterinarians oppose mandatory spay, or many veterinarians oppose mandatory spay-neuter laws. The past president of the California Veterinary Medical Association, Dr. John Hammel, wrote, "It is inappropriate to mandate a controversial and possibly life-threatening surgical procedure." As CVMA has argued in the past, decisions of this magnitude should be made after consultation between the owner and their veterinarian. A recent American Veterinary Medical Association report invalidates the claim by mandatory spay-neuter supporters that pets should be spayed or neutered for population control reasons, and invalidates the claim that spay-neuter is always healthy for pets. The report finds adverse effects from spay and neuter, including increased risk of aggression, prostate cancer, bone cancer, bladder cancer, hemangiosarcoma, obesity, diabetes, ligament rupture, and complications from surgery. I do microchip my dogs, I do spay and neuter my dogs, but I spay and neuter my dogs as a decision made between my veterinarian and myself.
Excuse me, I'm going to reiterate that we will ask folks to be respectful to all speakers, and if not, we will ask you to leave, so we can have civil discourse on this. Thank you very much for your respect of that. Please continue.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Turner is our next speaker. After that will be Gail Dash. Good morning.
Good morning. Nice to see you again. Thank you for having us here. Kathy Turner, Executive Director of Concerned Dog Owners of California. In spite of the laughter and jeering from this side, I would suggest that there's much that both of us on both sides don't know, and I would love to see this side learn a little bit more about the long-term effects on the health of dogs. Absolutely, you can spay and neuter a dog or cat and send them out the door, and they are alive. There is no doubt about that. But we're talking about groups that follow dogs for three, four, five, 10 years, and see what those effects are. Our group is in favor of spay and neuter. We spent a week in Sacramento getting a couple bills on their way to build voluntary spay-neuter funds. That money comes back to municipalities. We're working very hard on this issue. So I would like a little more respect from this side. We are not enemies on this, we all want the same thing. The health issue is a big one for us, because this bill, in spite of the exemptions, and there are many exemptions, would mean that 95% of Angelenos would have to spay and neuter their dogs early. We have presented some alternate language that we think would also solve the problem. We'd like to have that looked at, and we believe that the numbers are probably not quite as bad as anyone would think. It's strange for me to be supporting Ed Boakes, but he's done a great job over the last six years in decreasing impounds and euthanasia in the shelter. We need to do better. We could do so much better if we would all work together, if we would treat one another with respect, and if we would find ways to work on this problem together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gail Dash. After Gail Dash will be Jane Flanders. Good morning.
Good morning, Council. I've been a resident of the city of Los Angeles for 43 years, and a resident of Councilman Smith's district for the past nine years. My husband and I own an acre zone residential agricultural in one of the few neighborhoods in Los Angeles that's still zoned for horses. We thought the rural neighborhood in Northridge would be the perfect place to indulge our passion. Our passion is the preservation of an ancient breed of dog used by the shepherds in Hungary as a protector of their flocks. This breed is Kuvas. We show and train our dogs, we rescue Kuvas from shelters, we vet them at our own expense, rehab them, and find them new homes. We breed a litter about every two years. Wasn't it about 10 years ago that the city adopted the pet overpopulation ordinance? The license for our Intact bitch increased to $100. When we bred her, we spent another $100 to obtain the breeder's permit. This is a tax we get absolutely no benefit from. If I had three show dogs, that would be $600 a year in taxes that I got no benefit from, and that cut into the amount I could spend on the rescue dogs that I was pulling out of the LA shelters. Our puppies have been sold to families outside of Los Angeles, and we've collected state sales tax. We microchip our puppies, and if the dog is not going to be a show dog, it must be spayed or neutered at 18 months as a condition of the sale. Under the POP ordinance, weren't we promised a mobile spay-neuter clinic in the communities that had roaming pit bull problems? I know you took one officer out of every shelter to put in the field as a POP officer. I watched as a POP officer from the West Valley Shelter pulled up at our next-door neighbor's house, where they had Golden Retriever puppies from an accidental litter.
Thank you. If I can ask you to conclude, please.
Sure. He had no breeder's permit, nor had he done all the tests that I do to clear the Siren Dam for genetic defects.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Again, we commend the clock to folks, so they can best time their comments, and it counts down right there in front of you, so that hopefully will help you best pace that. Jane Flanders is our next speaker, and then Patty Burton will follow her.
I really didn't come prepared to speak today, but I would like to say I'm very opposed to this ordinance that you're trying to pass. I own pets, they are spayed and neutered, and I do that because I choose to do it. I'm not a big-time breeder, but I do think in terms of health and my rights as a pet owner, the people I know are careful, they take good care of their animals, and that choice should be theirs. Your ordinance is not going to stop the people that breed illegally and let their dogs run and fight dogs and do all kinds of illegal things. It's not going to stop that. And I think basically, most pets are spayed and neutered, but when it comes to people that want to show their dog, or raise service dogs, or have dogs things to do with their animals, that they should have the right to do that without having Big Brother breathing down their neck. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patty Burton is our next speaker. After Patty Burton will be Miguel Roche.
Can I yield the floor to Bill Helby?
I'm sorry, we can't do any yielding, so we have to just go in the order that they came today.
Okay. I represent the Borzoy Club of California, and we have a lot of Los Angeles residents. Listening to the supporters' arguments seems—it doesn't seem to make sense to cause dogs and cats to become extinct, just because—we think that—because pounds are overpopulated. It's like saying that as long as there are hungry kids in the world, people must adopt and not have their own kids. And as long as there are hungry kids in Eastern Europe, you should adopt, and you cannot have your own kids. People shouldn't be—responsible breeders don't just breed their dogs and cats. They plan, and they spend a lot of money. And targeting responsible people will just drive more people underground. Los Angeles's own experience proves that it's a very ineffective way of controlling the population. Since the pay or spay ordinance that Los Angeles City passed in 2000, animal control expenses increased by 269%, from $6.7 million to $18 million. And yet, compliance went down. So passing this kind of ordinance will only create more problems, because people that are irresponsible will just abandon their dogs and cats. And responsible people would be forced to go underground, and they may choose not to vaccinate their dogs, because they feel that the police state is watching them, and that could create a health hazard.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Miguel Roche, followed by Elizabeth Ann Molina. Miguel?
Thank you, Councilmember. I am a resident of your district. I strongly oppose this legislation that's being proposed here. Reason for it, I don't believe that this is animal welfare. This is the animal rights organizations trying to take our human rights away from individuals. It was mentioned earlier—it was mentioned earlier by one of their speakers that their goal is zero pet population, which we all know that will never happen. My dogs, my cats are microchipped, they are all spayed and neutered. It was not done at four months old. I believe that would have killed them. It is talked about that that will not happen. There are plenty of breeders and individuals that have worked with them that know that that is not a healthy age to spay and neuter. I really appreciated that I was given by this country the opportunity to make a decision of when I should be able to do that. We have an individual walking around with a white robe. That is pretty much—we can put on their dogs as well, cats as well. This also forces individuals to go underground, as mentioned earlier, because I do—I am in an area, large Hispanic community, that could care less about the laws that are put out there. When somebody comes around, or animal regulation comes around and says, "Your dog is not spayed or neutered," they will just say, "That is not my dog." They just hand them in. So I, again, strongly urge you to oppose this legislation.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Ann Molina.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Elizabeth Molina, and I do live in this area. I live in Studio City, California. The point of this legislation is to help reduce the amount of animals that are impounded. According to Jim Sanders, on July 11, 2007, in his article in the Sacramento Bee, he says, "In 2007, statistics show that shelter population has gone down steadily over the last 30 years, over 86% without this legislation." I am definitely for spay and neuter. I am against mandatory spay and neuter. I feel that mandatory spay and neuter is—it takes our rights as owners away, it will be ignored by the worst offenders, people that are irresponsible, and it does not address the person that goes out and buys a $2,000 puppy, gets it spayed and neutered, trains it, dresses it up, and when the dog grows up and takes too much of their time, off it goes to the pound. I worked in rescue. A lot of the dogs that come in to rescue are spayed and neutered. It's just that people—you can't change people, you can't change human nature. If they're not going to be responsible, they're not going to be responsible whether a dog is spayed or neutered. I feel this law does not address the real problem. A better alternative would be low-cost spay-neuter clinics and education programs and support for people that want to bring their dogs in. And I just, you know, that's what I have to say. I don't think this addresses the real problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marion Bradshaw is next. After that is Elaine Levinson. Is Marion Bradshaw here? And then after that is Elaine Levinson. After that is Diane Amendola.
Hi, my name is Marion Bradshaw. My husband has a four-generation family business here in Los Angeles. His father of running AKC dog shows, we are licensed by the American Kennel Club and have been very close to the purebred dog fancy and exhibitors of dogs in LA for years, and Arizona for years. So I obviously am very opposed to this. My father-in-law's received one of the proclamations that was given this morning for his dedication and business contribution to the city of Los Angeles. When you see yellow tags on people that are all over this room, these are people who are supporting mandatory spay-neuter. You may recognize—you may recognize that these are the people who got to Levine to get him to write the bill. That was pulled by the state legislature from the Assembly when there was time for education to take place. That bill was pulled. These are PETA supporters, and their avowed agenda is no domestic animals. So if you are wearing a wool—excuse me. If you are wearing leather shoes, if you had bacon and eggs for breakfast, if you plan to have a steak tonight, if you are wearing a wool coat, remove it, because these people are for a no domestic animal agenda.
Again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Levinson.
Hi, my name's Elaine Levinson, and I'm a constituent of Wendy Grull. We all have the same goals. We really want to reduce the amount of animals who end up in the shelters, but this is not the way. I'm opposed to this bill because mandatory spay and neuter has been proven not to work, and it leads to higher euthanasia rates and lower license compliance. Additionally, four months of age is far too young to spay and neuter a pet. The California Veterinary Medical Association is no longer in favor of the AB 1634, and that decision should be left between the owners and the vets. Thank you very much.
And our last speaker is Diane Amendola, on the against side. Diane Amendola?
I too am against the mandatory spay-neuter. As Mr. Cardenas spoke a little while ago about personal rights, this is my property. My animal is my property. That I should—this should be my decision, whether or not I spay or neuter my dog and when I spay it. I do happen to believe in spay and neutering. I do not think it is any business of any government to mandate when I do it. As Mr. Cardenas said, it is—you have personal rights. We still have them here in California, and I hope you don't pass this. There are many people here, and I'm wondering why Mr. Alarcon is listening to somebody who doesn't even live in his precinct, in his area? Why he listens to another person from outside of his area? Doesn't he represent his own people? I am very confused and very angry when I go into an office and find out that my representative is not listening to me and the people that he represents. The population, as everyone has said here, has gone down. The number of animals that have been euthanized in California has been going down for the last 15 years, and that's a statistic that cannot be denied. While that's happened, Los Angeles, you all know, what has happened to your immigrant population? It has skyrocketed. With those immigrants brings in a different kind of ideas to how to keep their pets. We do not keep our pets in the same way. It's not that they're wrong, they just believe differently than we do. Education is the answer to that. By educating the new immigrant population, you will further reduce the animals. And as far as some of the shelter people, some of the people that run shelters speaking, hey, yeah, they'd like you to pass this. They have another employee that they get to take, because it's going to cause more bureaucracy. You're going to need more employees to track these things. Please be responsible to your citizens. And please do more to educate the immigrant population that you have coming in here.
Thank you. If I can ask you to conclude. So that will be the end of the against side. That has been 20 minutes to each side. We will take three further comments, which are general nature. I would ask folks who have filled out just of general nature, please not to make comment for or against, or else we'll remark that card. Dee Wright is the first person for general comments on this, neither for nor against. After that is Monique DeSanto, and then Teresa Lee.
Thank you. A salient point that may be easier or easily overlooked is the nexus between breeders and terrorists, like the North American Animal Liberation Front and the ADLA. You may ask, what is this nexus? Both groups get their marching orders from Nathan Winograd, the self-appointed apologist for both terrorists and breeders. ADLA, the North American ALF, and the breeders all agree that Nathan Winograd is the only solution. Recent terrorist attacks against city employees and city residents have been perpetrated by the deci— by the disciples of Nathan Winograd.
Dee Wright is our next speaker? Is Dee Wright here? If not, is Monique DeSanto here? Okay. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to read into the record the other names that we received. We had about 69 further cards on the for side, 36 other cards on the against side, and a number of general ones. I'd like to read those names into the record first from the for side, and excuse me for any mispronunciations. I'll do my best on all the different handwriting here and the different names, so if I can ask your indulgence. Patricia Claude, Teddy Alves, Linda Maglia, Dolly Schaefer, Michelle Cho, Stephanie Kerrigan, Julia Pennington, Lisa Parker, Allison Lang, Fran Einberg, Barbara Kay, Frank Corvino, Alan Druce, I think, Druces, Ben Harding, Patty Shanker, Jane Garrison, Dr. Mark Anthony Garrison, Rita Burton, Diane Scripps, Arlene Cohen, Leonard Goodman, Marlene Goodman, Norma Sandler, Rosita de Kiersmaker, Stephen Feldman, Cynthia Hockman, Irene Ponce, Maria Atake, Andy Pearlman, Ed Buck, Ellen Little, Paige Miller, Charlotte Laws, Jan Weber, Renee Ruston, Caroline Nacella, Carol Raphael Davis, Elizabeth Whittlesback, Thomas Berg, Pam Wilkinson, and then from the against side, Rebecca Morse, Ken Burton, Miriam Fogler, Florence Blacker, Suzanne Sakain, sorry, Sakai, Beverly Striker, Lauren Henry, Heather Harris, Susan Sakai, Beverly Strinker, Striker, Ann Patrick, E. Sedlak, Bruce Darian, Debbie Bent, Thomas Powers, Karen Dombrowski, Suzanne Calahut Duckett, Patricia Schump, Sally Rosenthal, Margaret Moen, E. Sawyer, Helen Idan, Jerry Sutherland, Bill Hemby, Gary Marshall, Kathleen Greenbaum. We had from downtown Irene Skibun Wong and Yvonne Autry. We had also neither for nor against on their cards, but perhaps you were one way or the other, but I just want to name you as well. Mary Catalano, Carol Leifer, Jane Velez Mitchell, Kristy Metropole, Dr. Pia Salk, Chris DeRose, Amanda St. John, Anne Loun, Shannon Haber, thank you. And then, as I mentioned before, Dee Wright, Monique DeSanto, and Teresa Lee. That will close our public comment, and I'd like to return to Mr. Alarcon as our first speaker from the queue. Thank you all very much for your patience and your understanding and not being able to get to all those speakers, but we really appreciate everybody being here today.
Mr. President, I would ask that we hold my time and allow the Animal Regulations Department to make a presentation and to respond to some of the concerns that were raised by the previous speakers before I make my comment.
Mr. President, members of the city council, good morning. Last April, the city council voted unanimously to support Assembly Bill 1634, the California Healthy Pet Bill, a bill designed to end the incalculable suffering of unwanted lost and homeless dogs and cats in the state of California. We are here today to consider passage of an ordinance that essentially does the same thing for the city of Los Angeles. The ordinance you are considering was not, was passed unanimously by both the Los Angeles Animal Services Commission and the Los Angeles Public Safety Commission. I think it's important to understand that this is not a mandatory spay-neuter ordinance. This is a spay-neuter ordinance that provides plenty of exceptions for anybody who wants to exercise them. This ordinance is also supported by the Department of Animal Services, the Los Angeles Police Department, and the Director of Animals, of Animal Welfare, who represent the majority of our neighborhood councils. Today you will be hearing, or today you have already heard from many organizations and individuals who support this ordinance. The reason why this ordinance has such overwhelming support from so many who have committed their lives to public safety and animal welfare is because this ordinance represents a fair and prudent response to the city's escalating animal control costs and pet overpopulation problems. You also, you have also been hearing from many who do not support this ordinance. And while you've heard from a wide and diverse array of supporters, I want to call your attention to the fact that many of this ordinance's detractors represent a very narrow and vociferous group of breeders who fear any legislation that brings their questionable practices into the light of day. Additionally, as has been pointed out, many of them do not live in the city of Los Angeles. And I would like to ask how many breeders who are here today would like to submit their breeder's license and their business license to me before they leave? It is important for the city council to understand that, in the view of the department, no respectable, law-abiding dog or cat breeder need fear this ordinance. There are exemptions for any dog or cat owner regardless of breed, or even mixed breed, or any age. This ordinance provides the department a valuable tool for addressing pet overpopulation problems such as free-roaming dogs and cats, animal bites and attacks, and other animal-related nuisances in your district's neighborhoods. The vast majority of the calls that animal services responds to involve animals that have not been spayed or neutered. On behalf of the Animal Services Commission, I want to ask for, to convey two recommendations. First, they recommend a year review, a one-year review of the ordinance to determine if any fine-tuning is necessary. And second, they recommend the Human Relations Commission provide support to the Spay-Neuter Advisory Committee that the ordinance establishes, if necessary. Now, I want to specifically address one concern you have heard about this morning and that I know at least one council member has, has a concern with, and that is the suggestion that the requirement to spay or neuter an animal prior to four months of age is not healthy. While there are good men and women on both sides of this argument, we are here today to present you with the facts concerning the efficacy of early spay-neuter. It should be pointed out that current state law requires the department to spay or neuter all dogs and cats starting at eight weeks, at two months. Early spay-neuter surgery on cats and dogs before the age of four months has been safely and effectively practiced in the United States for over 25 years. The debate over the health risks associated with early spay-neuter was waged in Sacramento many years ago, and our state representatives understood then, as we in the department do today, that early spay-neuter is safe and in the best interests of animals not meant to breed. In addition to the state legislature, early spay-neuter is advocated and supported by the California Veterinary Medical Association, the American Veterinary Medical Association, the American Animal Hospital Association.
Allow our speakers to speak without interruptions. We know that there are folks who have different opinions on this, but please, we'll reiterate that warning. Thank you.
Thank you. Both of California's veterinary colleges, UC Davis and Western University, and other respected veterinary colleges across the United States, as well as the ASPCA, the Humane Society of the United States in Defense of Animals, the State Humane Association of California, and the California Animal Control Directors Association. Not only is early spay-neutering proven to be safe and effective, it provides numerous health benefits and protections for cats and dogs. Now, to further address the health benefits of spaying and neutering, and specifically early spay-neutering, I want to introduce several members of the department's medical team. Now, I know over the past year or so, many have attempted to cause the city council undue concern over the state of the department's medical program, but today I am pleased to introduce several members of what is shaping up to be one of the finest shelter medical teams in the United States. And I would like to first invite Dr. Feldman to come up. And Dr. Feldman is our chief veterinarian on staff.
Let me just sign this real quick.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Dear LA City Council members, in the early 1900s, Dr. Steve Feldman, in the early 1900s, elective ovarian hysterectomies were performed at three to six months of age, and castrations were done when pets were as young as four weeks. Over time, the recommended age for sterilization of small animals increased to six to nine months of age. Despite the advances in anesthetics and surgical techniques, many people still cling to believe that dogs and cats need to wait until they are six to nine months to be sterilized. There was a survey done of dog and cat owning U.S. households, and it was found that 56 percent of 154 canine litters and 68 percent of 317 feline litters were unplanned. Animal owners are clueless about knowing that their female dogs were in heat. This was the most common reason for the unplanned litters. Up to 57 percent of female dog owners didn't even know their dogs cycle in heat twice yearly. Up to 83 percent of cat owners do not know that the queens are seasonally polyestrous, meaning they cycle often during the seasons of increased daylight. Also, up to 61 percent of dog and cat owners were not certain, or truly believed, that their pet would be better if it had a litter, a litter before it was spayed. I provided to you, council members, four journal studies written by veterinary board-certified practitioners and academics. These studies show the many advantages to prepubertal sterilization of dogs and cats. The fourth article I have provided to you by Dr. Janet Scarlett asserts, "There are no scientific studies indicating that six months of age is optimal for neutering, and numerous studies document the safety of early-age neutering. In light of this, veterinarians are beginning to schedule neutering at the end of puppy and kitten vaccination series, approximately four to four and a half months of age, when animals are fully immunized but before they reach puberty. This approach lessens the likelihood that clients forget, or their pets escape and have litters before they are neutered, and has good potential to reduce relinquishments." Gonadectomy has many benefits besides population control, and my associates will present some information on the role that sterilization has in preventing mammary tumors, uterine infections, preventing and treating non-cancerous prostate disease in a male dog, and preventing pain and suffering. Thank you for your consideration.
I'd like to point out that the combined medical experience of the LA Animal Services Medical Team is well over three-quarters of a century of experience. I'd like to next bring up Dr. DeSanto, a graduate of Tufts University. I should point out that Dr. Feldman is a graduate of the University of Illinois. And while we're waiting for Dr. DeSanto, I would like to also comment on one of the concerns that we are molesting personal property rights with this ordinance. And as a conservative Republican myself, this is an issue that's very near and dear to my heart. But the one issue that is very different about our pets is we're not dealing with refrigerators, we're not dealing with cars, or those kinds of issues. We are dealing with living sentient beings who suffer and reproduce at an alarming rate. And if we don't get a handle on this, Republicans and Democrats alike are going to have to continue to foot the bill. Dr. DeSanto?
Hi, I am Monique DeSanto. I'm not a public speaker, so I apologize if I seem nervous. I've been a resident and practicing veterinarian in Los Angeles for approximately seven years. And I'm just here to speak on one of the medical benefits of spaying and neutering, spaying actually female dogs prior to their first heat cycle. Mammary cancer is the leading tumor-producing cancer in female dogs, and there are significant benefits to spaying a female dog prior to her first heat cycle to prevent this. Prior to the first heat cycle, if a female dog is spayed, her incidence of mammary cancer is approximately 0.5 percent. After the first heat cycle, that jumps to 8 percent. After the second heat cycle, it jumps to 26 percent. This is a pretty big difference in prevention of mammary cancer in the general population of pets. Approximately 50 percent of the mammary tumors are malignant in dogs, and over 90 percent are malignant in cats. In private practice, I saw many early mammary tumors that still needed extensive surgery, even though they were small, and the dog needed to be spayed to prevent hormones from feeding additional tumors, which is a stressful surgery for an owner when their pet is already 12 years old now and now needs the surgery. In the shelter, we see the tumors at an advanced stage, sometimes the size of a grapefruit, ulcerated, infected, sometimes maggot-infested, and it's a surgery that we, most of the time, cannot provide and deems the dog unadoptable, that could have been prevented had it been done earlier. Ultimately, I think that there are still many pets that will qualify for an exemption, decided with the personal veterinarian, and obviously breeders working dogs, but for the general population, I do think that spaying and neutering their pets prior to puberty is the safest thing for them.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to bring up Dr. Hockman. Dr. Hockman is a graduate of Atlantic Veterinary College, the University of Prince Edward Island in Canada.
Can I just ask how many presentations, how many more folks you have after this?
Two.
Two more, okay. If we can keep it concise, because we need to make sure we have time for the council members to debate. Thanks.
Hello, thank you for your attention. I have, in the past, have worked for, oh, Dr. Cynthia Hockman. So in the, in the past, I have worked for nonprofit humane societies, and I'm currently working for the Los Angeles Department of Animal Services, and I have been in the front line to try and reduce the number of stray pets. And so the humane societies are attempting to reduce the number of stray pets by having trap and release programs and honoring the coupons that the Los Angeles Animal Services provide. And the Los Angeles Animal Services have built six new shelters, and with the spay coupons and the reduction of license fee, it does not seem to be enough to reduce the amount of strays. So by dedicating my career to working with these animals, I have, I have come on a daily basis to find pets that have been non-spayed, that the owners are irresponsible, they're not spaying their pets, and so they presented with dystocias. And dystocias are basically difficulties in giving birth, and all that could have been prevented if they had only spayed or neutered their pet. There are many diseases that are being increased because of the increase of spay population. So it's not only a hazard to your, your pet, it's, it's a hazard to everybody's pet not to have your, the, oh my God, let's do it again. Can we do this again? Okay, let's just start again, I'm sorry. Here we go. Okay, so basically, let's just do this, okay? So medically, we are confronted with the result of non-sterilized pets, okay? The consequences of irresponsible pet owners allow them to breed their pets irresponsibly, and basically, then they're unable to afford the veterinary care for the mother and the puppies. The mother suffers from dystocia, and dystocia is a difficulty giving birth, and often, as a veterinarian, I presented with these pets that have life-threatening problems and that could have been prevented if they had been spayed. Also, after they're giving, if they're able to allow their pet to give puppies, these puppies are then born, and they're unable to care for their pets, and so basically, they become diseased and weak. And then, Los Angeles Animal Services has become a dumping grounds for many people who are repeatedly allowing who are repeatedly allowing their pets to breed and then drop off their puppy and still allow the mother to continue to breed and start the cycle all over again year after year. And so basically, it's important for us as a community to address this problem, okay? Because the number of stray population is increasing. And so basically, the humane society has, you know, given their effort. We've done, we're doing all we can to, we're building new shelters, we're creating more space, we're, you know, we're delivering, we're giving city coupons to help make it affordable, to remove the cost barrier. And also, we reduce license fees for those people who are responsible enough to spay and neuter their pet. But this is not enough. There are still more pets coming every single day. And so incoming animals is the basic problem and it is all of our responsibility. And so we can then try and spay and neuter our pets to protect our best friends. Thank you.
Dr. Lee, please. Dr. Lee is a graduate of California State University Davis.
With all respect to the folks that are coming forward, are they adding new perspectives or kind of reiterating the same ones? Because if they are, I'd prefer if we could get to the council member debate out of respect to the council members. If it's in a similar vein, unless there's any new information.
I'm sorry. If I may, we do have something of a rock star in this particular area. Dr. Mackey, who the city council has recognized just in the last year is the patriarch of prepubescent surgery. And if he could make this very quickly.
The final speaker and then we'll return to Ms. Alakon.
Thank you very much. The three doctors that were, oh, my name I know, Dr. W. Marvin Mackey, Animal Birth Control. Animal Birth Control, I started 32 years ago and have been doing that personally every since. Dr. Feldman, the three doctors that have been before me have done a real good, have done an excellent job and it keeps me from even thinking about having to re-go over it. What I wanted and was asked to concentrate on was about the early age and the proper age to do the pets. How did early age get started and when did it? It was brought to the attention of a gentleman who did a, who went and did some of the original study as to why we had to wait until six months of age. He was challenged by the humane community to, why can't we, why can't we? There'd been no studies about it as to why it should be at that age. Dr. Feldman mentioned earlier how early in this century it had been considerably lower. My earliest speaking tours, I would give the reason of why we evolved to the six months of age. I don't even need to go into that. But it had become the norm. Once he made this article come out and suggested that we think about doing them at seven weeks of age, the profession then was challenged and as a profession, there was naysayers within it to the extent that you heard behind us. We thought, many thought that if you castrated or spayed those animals at that period of time, that all kinds of things would be happening and be deleterious to them. It got as funny as being, the only thing they didn't mention is that at 12 months of age, the tails would probably fall off. I mean, they had everything listed. Over the next 10 years, studies were being completed because of the interest and the ranker that was going back and forth. We all know about the advantages of spaying in general. That has been alluded to just previously. With the development of the studies, no red flags were coming up. And when I say no red flags, that means problems that seem to be significant or any kind of concern. Differences, yes. The naysayers will say, well, certainly this won't happen, this will happen, that won't happen. And yeah, there are differences. What amazes me is that by removing the gonads of anything, that you don't see more trouble and more problems than you do. After all, it is part of the hormone system and you remove other parts of the hormone system, bad things happen. Not when you do the gonads, the ovaries and the testicles. All right, pretty much, the profession now has advanced to the point where most everybody is comfortable.
If I can ask you to conclude, please.
Most is pretty comfortable with four months of age, even the ones that are a little bit leery on going younger. I do them younger because I do a lot of work for the city and the state mandated that they have to have their animals done. I know a lot about it. They don't have trouble. The one thing I like, and I'll bring it up to close it off then with this, the advantage of what, when people come in and were getting their vaccinations, I say, get your dog spayed at four months of age when you get your required by law rabies vaccination. Isn't it handy how you get the animal rabies vaccinated and sterilized at the same time and they can go down and get their agreed dues price for their license? If they do what they're supposed to do, they'd wait six months or seven months and it's going to cost them, you can see where I'm going with it. Thank you.
Absolutely. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Thank you, members of the council. Just in closing, I just, again, would like to point out that this is not a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance. There are exemptions and all of the complaints and concerns that you heard from the breeders today are addressed in the ordinance. Everybody in this room could easily be exempted from this ordinance.
Thank you. And I neglected one small pile also of other folks that were for, I didn't want you to think that your names weren't in there. We heard from Marvin Mackey, Evelyn Gray, Ellen Lavinthall, Hayes Lynn, John Equis, Whitney Smith, Dwight Carey, Sandra Moore, Gary Castle, Casco, excuse me, Whitney Smith, Jim Combs, Ari Solomon, Miko Alane, Tina Bockrathbunch, Jaclyn Stare, Judy Tyler, Diana Colette, Marjorie Loeb, Jackie Rosen and Barbara Magnuson were also here in favor. Ms. Alakon.
Members, I think the very first thing we should do is thank all of the presenters, and I mean all of the presenters, those for and those against. And the reason I want to thank you is because I have every confidence that you love your animals. And I only wish that I could craft an ordinance that were tailored around your interests. But in fact, there are others who are at play here. There are those who are training animals to be vicious to our communities. There are those who are taking advantage of animals sheerly to make a profit. And there are far too many animals. Indeed, during the course of this debate, we probably killed a handful of animals in our shelters. We know that about 40 or so animals are killed every single day in L.A. city shelters, 15,000 a year. And we know that there are 50,000 unwanted animals in the streets of Los Angeles. This is not an effort to stop you from what you do. I encourage you to continue to be good owners, to love your animals, treat them right and educate others about it. I don't worry about your animals even right now as you sit here because I know they are probably well cared for. I know they're probably well fed, they're probably where they belong and not roaming the streets of Los Angeles. But I also have other images. I remember when I took my wife to the doctor just recently and had to literally walk around a dead animal that was in front of the car when I parked it, right in front of the doctor's office. It was not a good visual for my wife, who is going to have a baby next week. She turned to me and she said, you got to do something about this. And I said, and I had already introduced this motion, but it is that kind of reality that we have to deal with. The fact is that this is a humane ordinance. This is an ordinance. This is an ordinance that is seeking to be sensitive to the issues, not only of the animal, but also the owners, who are special owners, owners who are breeding properly, owners who are training to provide services to human beings, for disabled human beings and security officials as well, police officers and the like, saving lives in our community, human lives. They need to be shielded from this, we recognize that. But we also recognize the poor who cannot afford to spay and neuter their dog and we have provided provisions for them and we know that we already have a voucher program. I want to commend Bob Barker for giving about a million dollars every year to have dogs spayed and neutered all over the country. We also know that far too many animals end up in a situation and we all know that's been exploited by the Michael Vick story. But that is occurring in Los Angeles. It is occurring right now. Far too many backdoor breeders are treating animals in an inhumane way and disrupting communities in doing so. Far too many kids fear walking to school. Far too many people have been maimed by animals roaming the streets. Just the other day, about a month ago, I would say, a Saint Bernard was roaming in my neighborhood. Now, it was a great dog. I don't know who was supposed to care for that animal, but it was a shame to see it roaming through the trash in the neighborhood. Far too much time has passed. Far too many animals have been killed by our department. I would much rather have Mr. Box set his resources toward those gangbangers that are teaching vicious skills to animals that are loving animals. I would much rather he focus his attention on teaching young kids how to take care of their animals properly. I would much rather he focus his attention on providing more resources to help our young people and our adults learn from animals, learn humanity from these animals. They can do it, we can do it. But we must pass this ordinance in doing so. Mr. Rosendahl, I know, I know that, Mr. Rosendahl, you are one of the greatest lovers of animals on this council. There's no question about it and I respect your position. I do believe, however, that there is a great social benefit to be derived from implementing this ordinance at four months. And so with all due respect and without any disrespect toward you relative to your particular position on that issue, I know that you embrace this ordinance otherwise and I will work with you. But we have also created an advisory committee with the challenge of keeping an eye on this program. It will be a citizens advisory committee. Every council member would appoint somebody. I'm going to appoint Bob Barker. But I had to be first. But this advisory committee will be tasked with the responsibility of keeping us informed. I've never been one to say that any law is perfect. This is a democracy. It's a work in progress and we must leave the door open to see if we can do it better. I hope this advisory committee will work with us and the Animal Regulations Department to create an ordinance that will even be better. And that will be our goal. So colleagues, with all of that, let me finally just say thank you to a couple of people, certainly Mr. Box and his staff, all the advocates, but also Mr. Jim Bickart from the mayor's office. He's been tremendous in this process. And most of all, most of all, my staff, especially Jessica Avalos, who took this on beyond all her understanding, she saw this and we got an ordinance that we think is sensitive, compassionate, responsible and humane. And I urge your aye vote.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas. After that will be Mr. Zine and then Mr. Rosendahl.
First, I want to thank Councilman Richard Alakon for taking the leadership of introducing this at the local government level here in the city of Los Angeles and also for all the hard work it takes to do a good ordinance. And he's an honest man when he says it's not perfect. The citizens advisory committee will hopefully bring it and evolve it into a better, better system every year that comes by. But the fact of the matter is, I don't think there's a person in this room that doesn't aspire to see the city of Los Angeles be a no-kill city. I think that we all can agree on. It was a few years ago that I was inspired by Cesar Millan to start a program in the city, an animal cruelty task force that is now saving lives every day, every month, every year. And I want to thank Bob Barker for so many years, so many years, using his clout and ability to talk about how important it is that we go to a spay and neuter community throughout Los Angeles, throughout the state and throughout the country. And that has inspired me to run through the numbers and realize that the price is right. The fact of the matter is, the average cost to spare or neuter a dog or a cat in Los Angeles is maybe $60 to $80, average, okay? We already offer 20,000 vouchers every year in the city of Los Angeles to take $30 off of that price. We also offer 11,000 vouchers so that seniors and low-income families can do it for free. There are organizations that provide this service and the city partners with them and they have mobile vans that will go to communities throughout Los Angeles and make this service available to people for free. The cost to euthanize a cat or a dog is $145 to $195. That's the estimate. We all want to be a no-kill city. This is the most humane way to prevent the killing of animals. Tens of thousands of animals are killed in this city. Assemblymember Lloyd Levine, who's carrying this in the state, at the state level, just reminded us that 500,000 cats and dogs every year. That means a million in two years. That is unconscionable. So it's important for us to remember that this is the humane ordinance. Again, this is not a perfect ordinance, but the fact of the matter is, the price is right. We need to do it now. We have the ability to make it free for many and thousands of people throughout the city and we will create an awareness around this city to finally get people to do the right thing. And when you look at the numbers, everybody who loves animals know that a pair of cats or a pair of dogs in their lifetime could actually have 25, as many as 25,000 offspring. You can do that, you can do that math in two minutes on the back of a paper. That's the truth. A litter of eight, a litter of eight, a litter of eight, and you go down the line and well within that animal's lifetime, you'll see that many animals and even more. This is the right thing to do. Again, thank you, our general manager, Ed Boakes, for all the work that your staff has done. And again, to Councilmember Alakon, this is the right thing to do.
Mr. Zine of the Third Council District, San Fernando Valley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also acknowledge, I know we always like to acknowledge each other for doing something good, something great. Councilmember Alakon, as your wife waits to have a baby immediately, I know, I saw her over there. Also, former member, Assemblymember Corret, hurry up. Paul Corretts, thank you for your support. Also Lloyd Levine, who shares the district with me on the state assembly, I want to acknowledge them for their activities. We talk about compassion, we talk about a compassionate society. We need to show compassion for animals. We talk about the no-kill. It's wonderful to have a no-kill policy, but in fact, we have a kill policy in the city of Los Angeles. And the fact of the matter is, there's a lot of irresponsible pet owners that let their animals run wild in the city, whether it be the valley, east, west or south. And I know that in South Los Angeles, there's a lot of pit bulls that run around the communities and that's a hazard to everyone. I think the compassionate way to do this is what you've recommended. Now, I did some research and said, when can a kitten, when can a cat or a dog get pregnant? They can do that at six months. So we're talking about a four-month, a four months to make sure that that animal is not going to populate and then go to the shelter where compassionate city employees, animal services, have to leave these animals and then kill them. I'm sure it hurts the people from animal services that have to do that. That's a sad situation that we as a compassionate society have to remedy. So I'm totally supportive of this, I've been supportive of this and I will continue to be supportive of this. And it's the compassionate, reasonable thing to do. And all the love and the concern that you folks have and the time you spent to come down here on both sides of the fence, we all want compassion for animals. Now, whether it's four months or six months or whatever the case may be, we want to show compassion for animals so we don't have to do euthanasia, we don't have to put the animal and the staff through that ordeal. It's tragic to have to do that in a civilized society. Compassion, I'm almost done. But a couple of issues. Mr. Boakes, something that you said really disturbed me and that was that everyone could be exempt from this ordinance. I don't want to see everyone exempt from this ordinance.
Right.
I want to make sure that this ordinance has some impact and that there's not wiggle room where people can then escape this ordinance and then the ordinance means nothing. But if you respond to that, plus I have a couple more. But if you respond to that, plus I have a couple more questions. And the other one is, when we talk about a breeder, do we have the definition of a breeder? Is a breeder defined, or can someone come forward and say, "I'm a breeder," and this is not going to apply to me? The concern, also one more question on spay and neuter, when an animal is released for adoption, is it the policy to spay or neuter that animal when it's adopted in the shelter? If that's done, that's fine. But the other two questions is, if it's so loose that people can escape that, as your comment, and I wrote it down, that has to be resolved. And also, the issue of how do we define a breeder? If we don't define a breeder, we need to come up with a definition. But again, I totally support this. If you can respond to those two questions, hold my time, please. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember. There's no time to hold, but we will listen to the answers.
Harvey?
There's no time to hold, but we will listen to the answers.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, with respect, I don't believe that this is a loose accommodation within the ordinance, but the ordinance is designed, and again, I hasten to remind the city council that there will be an advisory council, a part of this, and we will be looking at this and fine-tuning this over the course of the first year for sure and ongoing. And if the ordinance, as is written, has the desired effect, we'll know we have hit a home run. And if it hasn't, we can adjust it at that time. Now, what I meant to convey is that anybody in this room with, and this is one of the concerns that the breeders had, was this is a decision that a veterinarian should make. Anybody in the city of Los Angeles can go to their veterinarian and with a letter from a veterinarian can postpone the securing of the spay.
That's what you meant by your statement.
That's exactly what I meant. And also, by purchasing the permit and the license, they can keep their animal intact for the life of the animal.
And then the aspect about a breeder, we have a definition of that? What is a breeder?
According to this ordinance, and if Mr. LaSalle from the city attorney's office may want to comment on this as well, but with respect to this, the ordinance, a definition, I don't believe is technically necessary, because anybody who wants to breed their license can get a breeder's permit and a license.
But there is a license to become a breeder. There's a process.
That is correct.
I just can't go down and say, "I'm a breeder," and then violate the rules that we're putting into place.
Correct.
Okay, so we have that covered?
Yes.
Again, I want to congratulate everyone. Thank you for being here. You got my vote supporting it. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
You're welcome to go first.
Do you'd like to go? You were on the queue earlier, Mr. Rosendahl, but did you want to stay? I know you had told the clerk that you wanted to maybe wait to...
I'll go first today.
Okay, all right. So we'll go to Mr. Rosendahl, and then we'll come back to Mr. Reyes.
Okay. I'm wearing my elephant tie, folks, and that's in memory of Ruby that is now in a sanctuary. And on my wall is a photo of Ruby. I really love animals. My three cats, now there's one left, they've passed, Rocky and Monroe, and Black Lady is still there. They've been fixed, because cats roam. Makes a lot of sense. I don't want unwanted cats running around the neighborhood. And there are cats running around the neighborhood. I think this law makes a lot of sense for cats. When it comes to dogs, first of all, I have asked you for two years to step up the registration of animals and go from this 20% to 100%. People who register their animals are responsible to the rules and to the laws. You have not been banging on the doors. You've not hired Boy Scouts or senior, you know, kids in high school, give them a percentage to get on the door, and get all these folks who are irresponsible with their pets and get them registered. Create the responsibility element first. Haven't done it. You haven't done it. You've talked about it, you haven't done it, okay? And I'll be personal. You know, my dog Rosie, which lived until almost 12 years old, was not, as German Shepherd, mature until it was 18 months old, according to all the vets I dealt with, to get all of its energy to be in a proper form. 18 months. I don't believe in this, eight weeks, two months, four months, that kind of thing, okay? The animal had not come into its true nature. If you respect the nature of animals and you respect your role as the person in charge of your animal, you're going to be responsible through all that process, which registering of the animals is the key for that responsibility, okay? Now, four months, three months, two months, five months, six months, do you realize we don't have enough police out there to police for our issues as citizens? And we're going to be banging? I just can't believe it. We bang on people's doors and say, "Oh, by the way, is your dog fixed or not?" I mean, for God's sake, what kind of fascist move is that in our society? And frankly, I say to all my friends, and many of you are my personal friends over the years, you know, I love animals and I believe in responsible animal owners. I believe that we should not have any unwanted pregnancies of any kind of animal out there on the street. I don't like putting them in shelters and killing them. I think it's all bad, that kind of stuff. But we need to get more people responsible by getting them within the map of registrations of the animals, okay? Then we can go from there. And I would much rather have a panel of experts who talk about, not what you skewed up with all of that, which I think was totally inappropriate, it was not a fair dialogue, that we should be really talking about what is a mature dog. Now, little dogs, Richard, fine. They're little toy poodles or whatever they are. They might mature earlier. Chihuahuas, I think you said, what are they? Your dogs? Chihuahuas, okay. They're a little dog. They mature quicker than a bigger dog does, and maybe it makes sense. Little dogs. So anyhow, in concluding, I am voting against this. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, may I comment?
Mr. Reyes.
Council President, if you hold my time, I think Mr. Boakes would like to respond to one of the assertions, if that's okay?
On your time, Mr. Boakes.
Thank you very much.
Please hold my time.
Certainly. Councilman Rosendahl, I admire and respect tremendously, and I consider him a friend, but he seems to be wanting it both ways on this particular issue. He's upset that we're not banging on doors to get people licensed, but he doesn't want us to beg on doors to make sure animals are spayed and neutered. It doesn't make sense. We can do both, and we should be doing both. And what this ordinance does, again, is it allows, because the department is complaint-driven, it will allow us to go into the areas of your district where you are having problems and have the tools to solve those problems. We do, in fact, have a canvassing program that we didn't have when I came to the city when you first suggested that we develop one, because it had been cut by the city council. We developed an ad hoc committee to go out and do it within our own means. And this year, we do now have a canvassing program that is in the neighborhoods, and they are increasing licensing. So I would love to talk to you about that in more detail, because you're horribly misinformed about what we are trying to do to increase licensing. But again, despite our best efforts to get people registered in the system, we routinely take in 50,000 lost and homeless animals in the city of Los Angeles every year, and that has got to stop, because we can't continue to be on this treadmill.
Thank you. Colleagues, I can share with you that, you know, as a youngster, we had our dog Sergeant, and we had this loose dog that came into our yard. It was a pit bull. It was loose. We don't know whose it was, but literally ran into my yard. My dog at the time was on a leash, and it attacked my dog. And we had to do everything physically possible to open up the jaws of that dog, to get it off my dog, and to save my dog. Now, this happens as a teenager, and this is what you see happening in these situations where we do have irresponsible people, and they are in the thousands when it comes to how they treat their animals. My neighbor, who was a senior, takes care of this abandoned dog. This dog is traumatized. It was brutalized, and she's brought it back to the point where it can actually now walk on the street with her. But you get close to it, and it literally just wants to shy away from anything that moves that resembles a male person, because it feels that it beat up. That same dog, every time she walks it, she walks in fear, because the dogs that are loose will attack it. My dog Chelsea, it's a mix. It's a Chow and a Husky. Beautiful dog. My kids, literally, when they take it for a walk, they go for a walk, but they take a club with them to defend my dog from the loose dogs that are out there. Now, this is how we have to live every day, so we need to do something. And it's been said, and it's been said, it's not perfect. What we are doing is learning from a system that is attempting to deal with these violent conditions. It's a humane approach, given our limited resources. But it's also an opportunity to bring in the school district, to bring in the county services, to bring in all the services and begin the education process. To actually start looking at connecting this concern for not only our pets, but for our seniors and for our children, and actually start that stimulation process. I keep hearing the word immigrant, and I keep hearing those people. Well, quite frankly, folks, it's all of us. It's one city. And as one city, we should understand our abilities to work with the school district and all the other jurisdictions to maximize an opportunity to increase the quality of life for everyone, so that we can all say we did this together as one city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and thank you, colleagues, and thank you to everybody who has come here today. This has been extraordinary outpouring of democracy. We have many meetings where there's a couple people in the audience, and that's it. And when we have hundreds, it is a wonderful sight to behold. I was proud to work with folks who are on actually both sides of this, people who love animals, to make sure that when we raised our permit fees, that 100% of that money, which it wasn't initially going to go to, went to spay and neuter coupons. I have been proud to work with you to expand what we've been doing. But I want to say something about healing for a moment here, because I think a lot of people don't speak on animal rights issues anymore, on animal issues at all. A lot of people, it's easier politically, kind of just to stay silent, because the passions are so vociferous. And I want to say that I think it is really time through this to heal. We've got amazing workers in animal services who are villainized when they go to work. We've got people on both sides of this who have yelled at each other today and sometimes called each other names, not the majority by any stretch, but some folks. And we always know those loudest voices sometimes drown out that more silent and respectful majority. We've got folks who are, I think, volunteers right now in our shelters, who are not connecting well with the city and need to connect better. And at the end of the day, I think part of the reason why this is happening is because so many animals are dying. The reason that their passions are so strong is because too many animals are dying. And if we take that as a principle first, no matter what you believe about this particular issue, we can begin to heal and come together on this issue. I feel very strongly in support of Mr. Alarcon's legislation today. That said, I respect very much Mr. Rosendahl and his strong opinions and passion on this. I know that enforcement is a difficult thing. We can't knock down everybody's home who's, you know, has crack cocaine today, but it's still against the law. We can't crack down on every single speeder that's on the road today. We don't have enough, you know, highway patrol officers, but we do establish laws nevertheless, and we do our best to enforce them. So this is, for me personally, what this is about. It's about establishing this law. And of course, are we going to find everybody? No. But we will make this a law now, and that allows us to have a chance to see many, many fewer animals killed. And when we do that, we also save money in a difficult budget year, we become a more humane city, and we get down to the road to the real things we need to be doing with our relationship with animals in this city. And I do believe that there is room, even if this does go through, for the folks who are on the other side, for healing to occur, for us to check in. I think people's fear quite often is that these things are static, that what happens today is the end of this ordinance, and any mistakes that are in it or any problems we have with it cannot be addressed. And I appreciate what Mr. Alarcon has done structurally in this, because oftentimes, pieces of legislation do pass, and we say we're going to revisit them, but we don't. But by having this board in place, that means that we are not only mandated by the way this is designed, but we will have regular check-ins, and we'll have multiple perspectives there. I hope that gives you some reassurance, because you certainly have my word as president of the council, that that is something that this legislative body can reexamine and make sure that it is working in the way that it is intended to, to protect our animals, to make sure that people are looked out for, and that we have the humane city that we want. So let's start to heal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I know we're going to switch spots. Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti? We need to, I'm going to have to speak now? Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Ms. Grul now.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and appreciate all of you that are here today. And I think the bottom line, as Mr. Garcetti spoke about, all of you are here to save animals' lives. That's the most important thing, that we all have the same goal. We may think there are different ways to get there. Mr. Box, I ask you a couple questions ahead of time about this, because people are passionate. If someone chooses, and they do not want to spay and neuter their animal within the four months or after that, is there a process where they have exceptions to that?
There is. They simply purchase a license and a permit.
Okay. And secondly, if you can't afford, are there programs that we have that provide for the lower-income coupons to have spay and neutering?
There are indeed. As Councilmember Cardenas pointed out, we spay and neuter some 45,000 animals every year already for folks who can't afford to have their animals spayed or neutered, using our voucher program to subsidize either free or low-cost spay.
Thank you. And like my colleagues, my dog out from the East Valley, which is no longer now in your district, but was in my district on Sherman Way, my dog, named Tuffy, was our dog, which we got from the pound. And I still remember distinctly at four years old, going in and seeing all of the animals that were there, and asking that difficult question of my parents, what was going to happen to all those animals? And they sidestepped it. They didn't really answer it. And I think that we don't want to see a shelter that, because there are too many animals, that we've not been able to do it in the humane way, is to provide this spay and neutering, to encourage people to do the responsible thing and have options. And there are exceptions. I mean, this is not a hard and fast, and if people feel very strongly about it, they do have options, whether through that permit or through those free, you know, certificates that do that. And this is a way in which I think the city has looked at, and thank you, Mr. Alarcon, and I know Mr. Cardenas have both worked on these issues for a long time, of designing something that is going to be able to serve our population and ultimately save animals' lives. And so I support the ordinance up before us today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Alarcon to close.
Is Mr. Alarcon to close?
Yeah, and I think he has to make an amendment as well.
Then I'll forego. I was going to call the question.
We'll keep you right after him in case anything else comes up.
Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon.
First of all, I'd like to make Mr. Box's recommendation that the advisory committee report back to the council on an annual basis, an amendment, a motion, and work with the department on that report. If I can get a second on that, Mr. Smith? Thank you. Secondly, I want to thank Tony Cardenas for agreeing to be the co-author of this measure. He's done a lot of work on violent animals, and I actually consider him the expert on the whole issue of how people are abusing animals to the extent and training them to be violent, and we want to thank him for his work in that regard. But I want to thank one person in particular who is here. 20 years ago, I worked in this building as Mayor Bradley's Valley Area Coordinator, and there was a woman who came to me within the first year, I don't remember exactly when we met first, to educate me about this issue, and that's Phyllis Doherty. So I want to thank Phyllis. It took 20 years, but I think we're finally getting there. And also, I want to thank Mayor Villarosa, because when we ran for mayor, we committed to try and do everything we could to make this as much of a no-kill city as possible. And so I am confident that if we send this measure to him, he will sign it. With that, I want to thank all my colleagues for their kind comments, not to me, but to those folks who have worked so hard to make Los Angeles more humane. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's no objection to that amendment, that will be accepted as a friendly... Oh, okay. If there's an objection to that, we have to vote on the amendment then? So if there's nobody else who wishes to speak, we'll first vote on the amendment. But this is not the vote on the full item, it's just on the amendment pursuant to council rules. Remember, a friendly amendment is not for the maker, it's for all council members to accept. So with an objection on that, seeing an objection, let's go ahead and open the roll on the amendment, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, one no.
The amendment carries. Now we have to vote on the full item. As amended, if we can open the roll on this item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, one no.
That is approved. Thank you all again very much, and thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Everybody, we'd like to just announce...
Everybody, we'd like to just announce one thing, that an ordinance requires 12 votes on a first reading. That will carry over one week, but then it only requires a simple majority next week. It's... I've not seen one overturned in my time in that time, but just to let you know, that's when it will be official, should the vote be upheld. Okay? If we can return to general public comment at this time, I know we had that delayed earlier. This is for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city council, like to ask Dr. Charlotte Laws to come forward. And if I could very respectfully ask folks to please save their conversations until they have left the chambers, so that we can hear our general public comment. Charlotte Laws will be our first speaker. After that will be Sharon Brewer. And thank you to our general public comment folks for their patience. Is Charlotte Laws still here?
You ready?
Oh, yes. There you are.
Hi.
Again, if we could just ask folks as much as possible to save the conversations till outside, and our apologies, Dr. Box.
And thank you for passing the spay-and-neuter ordinance. My name is Charlotte Laws, and I'm a member of the Greater Valley Glen Council, and I understand we have a deficit in the city. A contributing factor is waste in government. I have been faced with multiple opportunities for waste, both as a member of my neighborhood council and as a former member of the 912 Commission. As an example, and this is not the most egregious one, when my neighborhood council was buying a computer, we were told by Dunn that the city had a special deal on pricing. To make a long story short, the prices the city got were much worse than what Mr. or Mrs. consumer could get. In fact, the city deal was $600 more for the computer that we wanted. Luckily, we comparison shopped, and we did not go with the city's deal. Most city employees and neighborhood council volunteers don't have the incentive to look for the best deal. Everyone has a limited amount of time and much to do. Overpaying happens all the time. A potential solution is to hire a few people who do nothing but find good deals for the city. They would be like the mavens in the book called "The Tipping Point." I don't know if it would work, but I did talk to a legislator in Sacramento about this idea, and he thought it was a great idea for the state, so maybe it's something you want to explore for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Laws. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker. Again, as folks make their way out, if you can please keep your conversations to a minimum, Sharon Brewer is our speaker. And if I can ask folks who are not speaking if they could please take a seat or keep the aisles clear as much as possible. Thank you, Ms. Brewer.
Sharon Brewer, public comment. I really wish that I would have been allowed to do this when all the animal people were here, so maybe they could support me. Sharon Brewer, Lake Balboa fishing problems not being addressed by city council and recreation and parks. Fishing is a privilege, not a right. What's happening to the wildlife at Lake Balboa because of fishing is nothing less than animal, wildlife cruelty and abuse. Recreation and parks cannot stop the wildlife from coming to Lake Balboa to find food, but they can control how the fishing impacts their lives. The wildlife at Lake Balboa are being tortured by fishing line around their necks, legs, wings, hooks embedded in their legs, line down their throats. Some of these things lead to death or loss of a leg or foot, if not rescued in time. A Daily News article, January 17, 2008, which talked about the pelican with the arrow in its beak, listed my concerns regarding fishing at Lake Balboa. The unregulated fishing that is being allowed to take place at Lake Balboa needs to be immediately banned until recreation and parks finds a way to ensure the safety of all the wildlife at Lake Balboa. So far this year, I have taken six birds to California Wildlife, two cormorants with fishing line around their wings, three coops, two of them had to be euthanized because of a hook in their leg and swallowed a hook, a mallard with fishing line around its leg had to have surgery to remove the line. The ones that didn't die went down to the International Bird Rescue. These are slips from 2007, 33 that I was able to rescue, not counting the ones that I wasn't able to rescue. Again, something has to be done about the fishing that's being allowed to happen at Lake Balboa, and I really would have appreciated being able to do public comment while all these people were here, so hopefully they would have taken and helped support me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, folks, I know there's folks that are still having conversations. If we could ask you to please step outside for those conversations, or if not, to please respectfully keep your silence here so we can hear folks speak. Bruce Darian is our next speaker. Miriam Fogler will follow him.
Morning, City Council. President Garcetti. I brought here today an Olympic torch from the 84 Games. I was able to buy this off a private person many years ago, and there was a limited amount of these made for the games. I believe they sold for about $3,500, which went to the Olympics. Engraved in this torch is the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum, one just like it is in the city hall honoring the games. The reason why I'm here with this torch is that Super Bowl Sunday is this Sunday, and we know that the Los Angeles Coliseum was the host for the first Super Bowl in 1967. I think that it's a disgrace on Los Angeles that we do not have a pro football team for three-quarters of a generation now, 15 years, some 15 years, that the Coliseum doesn't have pro football, which was the first pro team in Los Angeles before the Lakers and the Dodgers. And I'd like to see that every effort is being made to get a professional team back to the Coliseum. Whatever needs to be done, keeping in mind that it is a national historic landmark, a two-time host for the Olympic Games in '32 and '84, and it brought great pride to be there eight different days during the Olympic Games, seeing baseball, track and field, soccer, basketball, baseball. And I'd like the council to make every... take every effort to see that we get pro sports back there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker. After that will be Candido Maris.
Oh, listen, folks, I'm exhausted from all this, and it was very, very... I was very uptight about the whole thing here. I wish that we all would be responsible for our society, so that government would only have to take care of our essential services and take care of the basic needs that we need for our world, I mean, our society in this country, so we wouldn't be have to asking the government to take care of it for us. I mean, what's about is, like, people shooting little arrows into pelicans and being abusive to their animals? I don't know. This world has gone to the end here, because it looks like we're waiting for the end of the world here, and it looks very much over the horizon, because the way it looks, folks, this is very bad. And, you know, S is not going to be the start, it's going to probably make things worse, because there's nowhere where the money is going, there's nowhere how the money is being used. What is going on? Why can I have... Bernie, can I sit down with you and go over the budget and look at the books? I'll do it for free.
Can you please address the...
I told you that.
Ms. Fogler, can he please...
I'm asking the whole council to let me speak, to have to talk to Bernie Parks in a budget committee. If I can get a ride from somebody to take me to this committee, I appreciate that. I was asking Rosendahl to go to his... He asked me to come to transportation committee, because I have a problem with my feet, and I can't drive that far, and I can't ride public transit, so I need help with somebody to help me take me to the committees. I would appreciate that. That would be very nice. And secondly, thirdly, well, I don't know what to say, just that I wish that you people would allow us to have balanced the books here like they did in New York when Mayor Kuhn took over. We need that now, and I'm endorsing Rosendahl for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments today. Candido Maris is our next speaker. After that will be Sevan Dakarian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, again, thank you very much for being here in the San Fernando Valley. It was wonderful to see so many people here. Again, I wish they would have stood around a little longer so that we could... they could hear the things that are taking place at Balboa Park. But last Friday, you folks honored four groups, and Mr. Garcetti, it was you, it was the WorkSource Center and the Youth Opportunity Centers. And I did some research, and I was... it was hard to believe that DWP, airports, and harbor, they don't hire from these groups. They have the people, they have the structure to actually get the people to the departments, but there's no agreement here. I hope that we really take a look at there. There's a lot of jobs there that should be going to your districts for people that really need them. And one of the things that I found is, one group of family members had 12 individuals working at one of the departments. That's an opportunity that's taken away from somebody else in your district. That can't happen.
Thank you. Sevan Dakarian is our next speaker.
Yes.
And after that will be Susan Rocha.
Hi, my name is Sevan Dakarian. I live in 12th District. This is for Greg Smith. Basically, I'm here for secondhand smoking, something to propose for our city. I understand other cities have adopted the ordinance. Just hope that the city that I live in is as passionate as other cities about their lungs. Just one of the issues has been cigarette butt littering everywhere, and I think that is something by law, they should be cited for that. Am I correct? You would see at nights where there are children near the water fountain, probably 10 or 20 cigarette butts all over the ground. Not only they don't take care of their lungs, they have no care for others around them, as well as they are just, I guess... I'm very nervous. This is my first time here.
You're doing great, don't worry.
And I got the entertainment and the knowledge about dogs and cats, and I guess neutering humans that have more than six kids and financially and psychologically they cannot afford, I guess neutering will be out of the question. But more importantly, I mean, I'm amazed how much passion there is about animals, and I should believe that there should be a passion for our health. And I will hope that this is something... this is my first time, I don't even know what we do, but cigarette smoking is an issue when there are other people around. If they want to smoke, they can smoke in their own space. I understand there's been ordinance for beaches or public parks. I believe children do go places besides parks or the beaches. They do eat, they don't go other places in public. That's it for now.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Susan Rocha. Susan Rocha here? Not Sheldon Walter?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. President, council members, I'm Sheldon Walter. I live in the 2nd District in North Hollywood. I want to hope we've had no troubles getting to the valley here. SCAG says that the mobility factor is a D minus, and we've got to improve that situation. I want to, first of all, commend you, members of the city council, according to Daily News article yesterday, adopting a program for magnetic levitation, setting up a joint powers arrangement with other cities in this area. This seems like a thing of the future, a transit system. And particularly, I want to commend Greg Smith as a leader in this, and I hope to stay with us very much. As an editorial today, you want to... I command you to read about Maglev versus subway. We know there's a big program out to try to extend the Purple Line out to Santa Monica. Okay. So SCAG is Southern California Association, the government should know, is now revising the regional transportation plan. They do this every four years. I think they've got a draft out now. And I went to their meeting, Lincoln-Golinsky, and suggested they consider several things. Maglev, subway is the red line extensions, which should be here in the valley, for instance, out to Silmar and out to Warner Center, maybe from Universal City. I've got 18, 17 seconds here. Green line extension to the LAX, blue line extension to Gold Line, Expo Line. And I want to thank you very much for your time, your interest. You might want to get involved with this SCAG process, because whatever gets in there may depend on what kind of transportation we'll have in the future.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
And by the way, vote on Tuesday, it's a very important election.
Thank you for pointing that out. We absolutely encourage everybody to vote on Tuesday. California's vote will very much count this year. Dr. Daniel Weisman is our next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I want to tell you that this has been one amazing morning. The amount of people here, the numbers of people that were turned away outside and couldn't even get in to talk about the motocross thing. Ladies and gentlemen, you have to change the way you do business. You've got to reach out to your communities far more, and you have to have lots more community meetings so that you can get the sense of what the people in the communities have to tell you. Reach out to, and as many of you already do, have very regular meetings with your neighborhood councils, with the community members. This outpouring is just an indication of how high on the top of that pyramid you're sitting, and how broad the pyramid underneath you really is. Now, I'm glad that the previous speaker said something about next week's elections on Tuesday. Certainly, all of us need to be sure we get out and vote. However, I'm really very concerned about the one issue that is the city issue, Proposition S. I think it's being represented badly, and it's being misrepresented, and I call on one or more of you, probably the most outspoken of you, that's the gentleman who just walked behind me by the name of Rosendahl, to speak out about the fact that Proposition S is a replacement of an existing tax that was declared illegal by the federal government. Even the election materials, and I just put my mail-in ballot in just a few days ago, says this is a tax decrease. Ladies and gentlemen, you know full well that it isn't, and I'm really ashamed that I haven't heard one or more of you speak out to that fact publicly. It is a tax replacement, it is not a decrease, and in the long run, it may actually increase the revenues that this city gets. We do indeed need this money. We do indeed need to pass something along these lines, but you have represented it poorly. Thank you for hearing me. I hope to hear from you on this issue.
Thank you, Dr. Weisman. Appreciate it. Next, we have Michael Hunt as a speaker. Like to also let folks know who are watching at home, we certainly do not endorse any of the images you're to see. Under First Amendment, he has the right to come forward. Michael Hunt is our first speaker. When we would ask you at the outset, too, to... I'm speaking for myself, but I think the whole council, it is offensive to see Ku Klux Klan garb here and the words that you have there, but you certainly have the right to address us, and these are your two minutes, but we will also speak out whenever we have with our rights of free speech as well. Please.
Yes, Mr. President, I think that we've come to a brick or a wall, because our attorneys tried to fix the situation for you guys, and we tried to make everything happen. We suggested that you guys... You can turn your back, because that's what white people do. You know, I'm used to being discriminated against, so when you understand that that's what the image is about, and that's why I'm here, because I've been discriminated against, then you really understand, you know, really what it's all about. This costume, or what you call a Klan uniform, or what you call my First Amendment rights, have been violated. You know, I understand an agreement. I made an agreement not to wear this in city council. I made an agreement to work with you guys, city attorney, to negotiate our terms out. It wasn't done. I think faithfully you can say, Mr. Hunt, it's real. I got it in writing. Matt Dowell issued the things in writing. We are trying to get out of here. Under no circumstances will we allow you guys to violate our rights in any way, because you guys don't want your rights violated. That's why you turned around, or you're not listening. But it's okay, because there is a federal judge, and there's a trial that can award us what we need to have done. I'm prepared to take them steps. I am prepared to... What black people's always been fighting for 200 years. Harriet Tubman had the Underground Railroad. Malcolm X said we didn't land on Pemper Rock. Dr. King had a drink.
Our next speaker is Matt Dowell. Also, for folks who wanted to reiterate the previous speech that was made in... Also for folks, we wanted to reiterate the previous speech that was made in Ku Klux Klan garb is protected under the First Amendment, but we certainly do not condone that. Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, yes, and everything we do here has a First Amendment connotation, the masks, the costumes, the language, because we have a valid Section 1983 claim against the City of Los Angeles, and for the people at home, that's a First Amendment federal lawsuit. See, Eric Garcetti's supporting Barack Obama in the presidential elections, he's only just getting on side with a black man now. I've been on side with this guy for two years. So Eric, thanks for catching up.
You could please address the council as a whole. Thank you.
So what I have here is a statement from the attorney, our settlement conference statement, which outlines our case. The judge said, "We're the winners. We won. He will give us the summary judgment to go to the jury and have the jury award us damages. 700 days of continuous First Amendment violation, 24 times in jail, 74 days in jail, broken feet, emotional distress." It goes on and on. I'd like to submit this to Sergeant-at-Arms. If there's one on duty, I can't see, they're all just sitting down doing nothing, sir, please.
We'll make sure we get that.
See, Jack Weiss is an idiot.
Sir, you're now breaking the rules for impertinent comments.
That's broken the law. I think you better check with this city attorney.
That is Rule 12, these personal attacks, you're being warned.
That's about his, that's commentary on his performance.
Thank you for your comment, sir. That will end your public comment for today. We have a strict rule about that, and I think you know it well, as well as anybody. And thank you, Mr. Dowd, for being here today. If we can now go from public comment, thank you, Mr. Dowd. We will now go back to the items called special. Next item, please.
Next item is Item 31, and that was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Colleagues, I just wanted to briefly bring this to your attention. This is an item, I know Ms. Gruel has had a motion that she put in, Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosendahl is working on one. All of us are working together, as is the mayor's office, to try to figure out how we can add revenues to the equation in this budget year in which we have deficit. Every dollar we put back in is a dollar that protects our libraries, protects our parks and recreation, protects public safety. And with that, this motion will kickstart several key measures that the city can take to increase its revenue through stronger enforcement of our tax laws. We've worked closely with the Office of Finance on these. First, for delinquent taxpayers, we will extend the lookback period so that these people who have not paid their taxes will now not only have to pay three years, but up to seven years, and pay their fair share of tax burden that they put on everybody else who pays their tax. We're also going to take a closer look at parking and the way it operates in the city, making sure that parking operators also pay what the laws say that they must under the city's parking tax. And also, we're going to enact two other fees that are part of our taxes, one with a transaction fee for online payments and our fee collection cost recovery. These will take some time, but we estimate that these are somewhere between 3.6 and 4, sorry, 5.6 million dollars that we can put back into the city budget. It's something that's critical this year. We are doing our part. We want the people out there to know that we're doing our best to be creative. I want to thank Mr. Parks for his great stewardship of the Budget and Finance Committee in making sure that we do that. The mayor has put his proposals out together with ours. I think that we will make sure we continue to protect those things that are most important to Angelino's. So I urge your eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. There's no speakers on this matter. Matters before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next is Item 32, and that was called special by a card from the public.
Number 32, Card from the Public. Marion Vogler. Sharon Brewer.
Am I, or is it Sharon me?
Matt Dowd.
Thank you, Matt Dowd.
No, no, Sharon Brewer for, I'm sorry. Marion, you're first. Marion, you're first. I was just calling the order that we have the cards.
Oh, okay.
And then followed by Sharon Brewer, followed by Matt Dowd.
Yeah, I was hoping that you would vote against these fee waivers. I think it's about time to show accountability if you want S to pass, folks. Why should I vote yes on S if you don't stop these fee waivers? This is outrageous and needs to put to stop now. We need to show where every cent goes, because if you're asking public officials to take five days off, you need to show everything, and I mean everything. This is ridiculous. Valentine's Day benefit, $4,200, outrageous. Dominique Dyke could just go down the list. The Grammy Awards have never been given money either. And what's this one here? Students Run LA, $11,508? Why can't they raise the money to get that? And here's one, Northern Trust Open, $23,000, right here, folks. Just go to laacity.org, go look at the agendas, you can see what's on these. The public needs to come down here and participate and show these guys. If you want to vote yes, people should come down here and show their support. If they, we should be, we're showing opposition to S because of this. And if I would see that the city be responsible with the money, I would be glad to, but I don't want to pay taxes that are not fully, are not represented fairly to me. It's against, it's like the Boston Tea Party, folks. We have to show at the polls now, Tuesday, vote no on S. I have 17 seconds left.
Well, you're gone now. Now your time is gone.
Sharon Brewer, Item Number 32, specially vet fee waivers, seven total, three with I see the one for the student run at LA, I know it's at Hanson Dam. I also see that it's sponsored by Run LA and CD7. I'm kind of wondering how much money CD7 put in. For E, you have $23,174 for the 2008 Northern Trust Open. Sponsor is LA Junior Chamber of Commerce, and it says that it's internationally renowned PGA Tour Golf Event. When you mention PGA, to me, that's a professional entity, and the motion also doesn't say where it's being held. And B, $4,213 for Lust for LACE Valentine's Day. Sponsor is the LA Contemporary Exhibitions. Couldn't they have taken and picked a better title than Lust for Valentine's Day? The other thing is, once again, nowhere are you addressing and putting a moratorium on the special event fee waivers. You've got a budget problem, Prop S may go down, but even if it saves a little bit of money, you should be looking at it, and just like with the Grammys, when I said something on Wednesday. If it's not open to the public and it's free, you shouldn't be going and using taxpayer money to go and waive the event. And again, LAPD is usually involved in these things, DOT and the Fire Department. Look at their overtime and see where a lot of the money goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dowd, please, followed by Lydia Grant.
Thank you. Maybe I can get through two minutes this time legally. So, yeah, I've talked about these special event fee waivers, and this Item B, this is the one that's really the problem. The Lust for Lace Valentine's Day benefit on February 14, obviously. This is a pure commercial, sexual nature event that really the City of Los Angeles has no business paying for at all. See, I'm in favor of Prop S. I'm supporting Prop S publicly because the city needs the money, probably because we've squandered a lot of it on these convention fee waivers, these special event fee waivers. So it's about time we really stopped putting these things on the agenda that are causing trouble, because we'll be back. And you can see it here now, this is wasting a lot of public time, public money, and it's $4,200 that these people should be paying back to the city so that we don't have to tax everybody's phone and internet and text messages and all these things on Proposition S. But unfortunately, for two years, we've been here fighting the City Council, and here's another lawsuit that's going to cost you money, and these are all things, including these special event fee waivers. And I'm so glad Mr. Zine's up here, because Eric would have shut me down probably 30 seconds ago at least, but I think I made my point.
I will in 22 seconds shut you down.
Oh, okay, well then, let me just say that, there's a couple of other ones here that are being reimbursed. See, the Grammy event, now that's good. And the 2008 Northern Trust Open. Oh, wait, that one's, we're paying $23,000.
Thank you. Time is up. Lydia Grant.
Let me just say one thing.
Mr. City Attorney has a comment.
Just, I just.
Hold on a second, Ms. Grant.
I just checked, the LACE event is a benefit for a nonprofit organization.
Thank you, Mr. State Attorney. Ms. Grant, your turn.
Hi, my name is Lydia Grant, and I'm the education representative on the Sanlito-Hunga Neighborhood Council. I have two things I'd like to talk about. The first one is SRLA. I don't know if all of you are aware, I hope that you are, that the school board is going to be changing over the middle schools to block scheduling. And if all of you don't know what that means, it means that the student schedules change. And our middle.
We're on a special event. You relating to special event? Okay.
And one of the things that's happening is they are going to be changing PE to only every other day for the students. The reason that I'm here is to ask that on fee waivers, I know that there's issues, but I ask that you do support the ones like SRLA that support the health of our local students. And that's going to be very important with it being cut down. The second thing is, our school is very active in SRLA. We had 154 students finish the LA Marathon last year, and we have over 200 running this year, and that's at our middle school. The second issue I'd like to bring up is actually the Lace event. I did look it up on the computer before I came to understand what it was. And just to use a few words that I underlined out of their article describing it, I would use the words kinky crafts and all manner of delightful debauchery, featuring the videos of art slut. I'm sorry, I don't think that's acceptable for fee waivers, and I'm sure that if Wendy was here, who is my constituent of Ms. Gruel's, that she also would not be voting for this event. So I really appreciate it. I'll be happy to hand this over. If you guys would like to see it, you're more than welcome to. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. And your item was Item C under Number 32, so thank you. That concludes the speakers on this matter. Madam Clerk, open the roll.
Mr. President, I believe Councilmember Rosendahl had a comment.
Oh, he didn't hit the button.
Thank you. It's just a procedural issue on 32E from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. It had 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM for this event. I needed the two-hour difference.
Two minutes, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
That's correct.
Okay, that'll be added, without objection. Okay. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. The next item is Number 33. We have public comment cards, Marion Vogler, Matt Dowd, Number 33. Marion Vogler, followed by Matt Dowd. Two minutes on the clock.
Hi. Anyway, I'm back and talking about the special fees here on the special here on the $10,000 that you're using for this program. It looks like a very good program to bring people here. You know, if we can deal with the immigrants this way, all, even the ones, the illegal immigrants, why don't we have programs to bring them on board instead of having them hide and do things under the table? Why don't we encourage them to learn about American culture, being American? I don't want to seem like I'm saying that we shouldn't have a culture here. We should have American culture. Everybody comes here from all over the world. So why can't we get the money from the federal government to help us with this? This is their program. They're the ones that are responsible for the immigration in this country. So I mean, we're talking about short of money, $270 million. I mean, every drop counts here, folks. And you're asking the employees to take five days off so that you can do this? You know what I'm saying, is the point I'm saying is that we don't need to have this spending going on. We need to get the money from the federal government to pay for this kind of program. I am for it, but I don't want to spend the $10,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dowd, please.
Yes, thank you. See, this city is going to grind to a halt without Prop S. If you listen to Chief Bratton and all the civic leaders, and that's why I'm in favor of it, because I don't want to see the city grind to a halt, because I don't want to see children die because they don't have an emergency response.
I don't believe he's on topic yet.
Anything to do with the budget in this city has to do with Prop S right now, and this is a budget matter, $10,000.
Mr. City Attorney, you want to interject?
I thought I just did.
Is he off the target?
He is.
All right, Matt Dowd, you want to be on target, or you're going to be removed?
Okay, I'll be exactly on target.
Thank you.
I think the City Attorney is wrong on this item about the convention center, because it's a budget item for $10,000 that the city is waiving the fees. See, for the future of the city, we have to start looking at the problems of why there's no money left, and this is one of them. You keep saying this serves a public purpose, but it doesn't. These are private individuals who are becoming citizens. How does that help the rest of the public to have more American citizens for them? That's actually, that's the traffic problem, and the density problem, and the infrastructure problem. So it's not a public purpose, that's a private purpose, and I'm very happy for public events to be waived, the fees to be waived. But I'm going to get up here every single time, if you're going to expect the citizens of this city to pay a phone tax to help support this, then I'm going to get up here every single time that I think it's not a public purpose. And plenty of them are public purposes, and I've seen them. But as far as the City Attorney thinking I'm off the topic, he's completely wrong, and he needs to go back and study up on the Brown Act, or whatever the rules are that you just completely abused.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney has to take classes occasionally to remain a member of the bar. Our next item, there's no speakers on that. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. And our next matter is Number 40. Public Speaker, Marion Vogler. Pardon me? Yeah, Mr. Garcetti.
Just to let Ms. Vogler and any of the other folks who are watching know on this, this item didn't, the reason why it was received and filed today is it didn't reach the floor in the state legislature, so the abolition of rent control in the mobile home parks didn't even make it to the floor, so we've been told it's dead for the season.
Marion Vogler, you have one minute on the clock. One minute on the clock, Number 40.
Yeah, I just want to say I opposed, and I'm glad it didn't make it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes that matter. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next matter.
Next, there are motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred.
No, that was 40.
Mr. President, we have excuses on the desk.
Shall we deny them all? Mr. Garcetti says nay. Items.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on Friday, April 25th, for city business. This meets policy.
Ms. Alakon, Mr. Garcetti approve.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on Friday, April 18th, for city business. This meets policy.
Ms. Hahn approves.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Any announcements? Mr. Parks, Janice Hahn. Janice, you're first. Mr. Parks, second.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray is third.
I didn't know if anybody had the opportunity to already speak about National Wear Red Day. Has that been?
Madam.
Okay, good.
Janice Hahn, Janice Hahn. Look at Mr. Smith, look at Mr. Zine.
Okay. Okay, well, I just wanted.
Look at our clerk, there's three of us in here.
Okay, I just wanted to tell everybody that today is National Wear Red Day.
Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Garcetti.
You know, I haven't talked this whole.
Oh, he's wearing red, I'm trying to inform him he's wearing red.
I have not spoken for.
You have two minutes.
I know, it's my first time.
All right, we'll give you three minutes.
Thank you. Just wanted to tell everyone who's out there today, or maybe watching, the reason that we're wearing red today is to declare that this is National Wear Red Day, and this is to remind people that particularly women's hearts. to remind people that particularly women's hearts can be broken. No, that's not what this is about.
That's Valentine's Day.
Oh, yeah, that's Valentine's.
That comes up in a couple of weeks.
And when we find a cure for that.
Does Ms. Han have a broken heart?
Then this will truly be a great country to live in. No, this is to say that this is to support for women's heart disease awareness, and you either wear red or you wear the little red heart. Just to remind people that the heart disease is the number-one killer of American women. In fact, one in four women dies of heart disease. So today, we're bringing awareness to that. A lot of people sometimes don't think that that is a problem for women, but that's what we're doing here today, women's heart disease. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Parks, Mr. Parks.
Mr. Zine, I just want to announce that on February 4th, we will be having our Budget and Finance meeting out in the community. We'll be in CD 12 at St. Nicholas Orthodox Greek Church at 9501 Balboa Boulevard, and we'll start at 6 o'clock. Also, for those that are interested, on Thursday, February the 7th, at 9 o'clock, we'll have a Special Budget and Finance Committee meeting dealing with the mid-year financial status
Thank you, Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a shout out, I want to thank Amy and Eric for the avocados and for the radishes and all these other goodies that he gave me. I appreciate it very much. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Garcetti wants to thank you for the eggs that you brought that are at the president's desk. Mr. Riz.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just wanted to remind everyone, tomorrow, we're having a conference on Solid Waste Integrated Resource Plan. It'd be great to have the community folks come on out. We talk about the trash, debris, and recycling, and this is about informing ourselves and how we can deal with the whole issue of our environment, so come on down to the convention center, trash cans, I mean, the whole thing, green cans, blue cans, come on down. We'll be in Room 515A and B. Enter the West Hall parking at Cherry and 12th Street. And Bill Rosendahl, our councilman, will be doing the opening.
And there's also the mayor's.
And Mr. Smith.
And there's also the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast tomorrow at 8:00 AM at the Bonaventure Hotel, the Mayor's Annual Prayer Breakfast. Any other announcements? Adjourning motions? Please, it'll rise for our adjourning motions. Ms. Han.
To adjourn today, in the memory of Larissa Pace, she was also known as Kitty Pace. She passed away recently at the age of 88, and she was the mother of a CRA employee, Betty Pace, who we know down in San Pedro, she works out of the San Pedro Municipal Building. Kitty was born in Jackson, Mississippi, but settled in California after she married her husband, Edward, in 1934. She always had a flair for fashion. She maintained that once her youngest child was in high school, she would start her own business, and she did. Kitty's boutique opened on Hauser Boulevard in 1956. She created theatrical designs for entertainers such as Ike and Tina Turner, The Supremes, Nancy Wilson, and Mrs. Nat King Cole. Over the years, Kitty's boutique became the largest black-owned ladies apparel business west of the Mississippi, according to Lloyds of London. As it grew, it relocated to the corner of Crenshaw and Adams, where she displayed beautiful black mannequins, the first of their kind. She later relocated yet again to the Santa Barbara Fashion Plaza, where it remained until it closed. Kitty, with, Kitty and Edward divorced after 35 years, but remained friends. That's nice. With the. I know. I always think that's worthy of note, because so many times, that's not the case. Particularly in my own. With William Wiggly, Kitty became a foster parent, caring for a number of needy children over many years. After being diagnosed with vasculitis, she fought hard for 16 years. She survived by three children, Edwina Jean, Judy, and Betty Ann. She's also survived by five grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren. What a great lady Kitty was, had a great life, and thank you, Betty. We know that she meant a lot in your life as well. We will all miss her. Thank you.
Any other adjourning motions? Madam Clerk, all the roll.
Well, why do you guys put that stuff in my stuff?
This concludes this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We'll meet again on Tuesday, Los Angeles City Hall, downtown LA.